We are now live.
Good evening. Thank you all for attending today's meeting of San Rosa City School Board, opening this meeting Wednesday, April 13th, 2022. We're all here in person. Hey. We will start our meeting as we have been doing all year with a territorial land acknowledgement. Joining us this evening is Ricky Feather Cruz, who is of Lakota, Nakota, Pomo and Zapaték Heritage, and a current board member for Sesko Intertribal of Napa County and a Santa Rosa City School District Indian Education Committee member. So, Mr. Feather Cruz, if you could join us. Hello, welcome. I'm turning it over to you.
Just press the button.
Hello. My name is Ricky Feather Cruz. I'd like to thank you guys for the invitation today to do the land acknowledgement. And I would like, please, everyone stand up. Don't worry, it won't be long. I'd like to acknowledge the fact that we're meeting here today on the land of the Pomo people of Santa Rosa and the land of the Coast Miwok, past, present, and future. And I'd like to thank the land itself and those who have kept it and preserved it and kept it from being capitalized on. And those of you that are on Zoom right now, I encourage you to research, you know, the indigenous peoples of your land that you're sitting on right now in the comfort of your home and/or office. I don't mean that to sound with any animosity. It's just the littlest thing you can do. I'd like to say thank you in my Lakota and Pomo language, Wopila and Yahweh. Thank you. You can now be seated.
Thank you, Mr. Feather Cruz and the San Rosa City Schools. We will continue to honor the past and the present, the future of this land, and for our school community with respect and gratitude. Thank you again. I should have just had you stay standing. We are going to rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, hooray, we're all here in person, and most of us are here in person, those that could make it. Before we continue, I just want to take a moment for us to appreciate the effort it's taken for us to be here in person today. The the safety precautions, the staffing, the equipment, the person hours, the location, Dr. Clissold, Santa Rosa High, the use of this auditorium. I was here yesterday and saw a lot of behind the scenes on the dry run. And what the public may not be aware of is everything that it took to do this. So, I just want to say that this is a big deal for us to finally be back in person. So, thank you all. And as we get started, we need to treat tonight as sort of an opening night. This is our performance. There might be some hiccups, might be some stumbles, there might be technical difficulties, but please be patient. The show must go on. So, now down to business. At the start of the month, district schools recognized the life and legacy of Cesar Chavez with a state holiday, and some of our school sites had lesson plans and days of remembrance events. Cesar Chavez, the celebrated activist and co-founder of the National Farm Workers Association, taught us so much about determination, perseverance, fighting for what's right, and embracing one's heritage and culture. One important message that he preached was respect for all, and that the celebration of one's own identity and culture does not mean contempt or disrespect for others. We can embrace all cultures, and we try to do that in the district. Cesar Chavez also had a deep respect for community and service. He knew the power and potential of people coming together with passion and common sense. So, tonight, board members and staff, I want to acknowledge that all of you are servants of the people. I appreciate the passion you bring to the district and the common cause we all share. I want to thank you for the tireless work you do. And so, let's ground ourselves tonight in the legacy of Cesar Chavez and reflect on his words that being of service is not enough. You must become a servant of the people. When you do, you can demand the people's commitment in return. So, together, we can accomplish anything. See you later. Moving on in the agenda, agenda item C3, report of actions taken in closed session. There were no actions. See four items considering closed session for actions in open session. There were none. See five statements of abstention. Board members, are there statements of abstention tonight? Seeing none. See six, adjustments to the agenda. Board members, superintendent, are there any adjustments needed for the agenda? Seeing none.
I
We do have one.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so adjustments to the agenda. Can I pull F5? Pulling F5?
Pulling item F5, okay.
Thank you.
Any other adjustments? All right, we are going to the public for adjustments to consent items. Are there adjustments on the F items only from the public? I do not see cards. We're using these blue cards tonight for public comment for those in attendance, but we are also taking comments from those folks who are joining us virtually. So, if there are requests, adjustments on consent items only, the F items in the audience, if you do not have a blue card filled out, could you stand maybe for the F items? Okay, we're clear. Now, could we go to those folks online if there are F items to be polled? Dana?
If there are any members of the public who are attending online who would like to discuss an item in the F consent item part of our agenda, now's the time to raise your hand so that item can be polled for comment later in the meeting. Anyone with desire to comment on F consent items, please raise your hand now. There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Beth. All right, moving on, see seven special presentations for student of the month and employees of the month. The presentations tonight will honor our students for their academic, their character, and their praiseworthy accomplishments. We will also be honoring our certificated and classified employees for their outstanding dedication and service. So, joining us for these presentations, we have principals Leota and Schluter. If we could bring them, populate them, I guess. Oh, they're here present. Welcome in person. Not yet.
Should be blue.
No, just tap at once.
Yes, okay, excellent. All right. Good evening, President Sheffield, Superintendent Trenell, school board members, cabinet members, and Santa Rosa City Schools community. I am Lauren Leota, the proud principal of both Luther Burbank Elementary and Learning House. I am honored tonight to recognize our award recipients for certificated employee, classified employee, and student of the year. We're going to start with our classified employee for Luther Burbank, Heather Rosales. Heather has a long history with Burbank. First, as a parent, her daughter attended Burbank and graduated from Burbank. Then, in our lead noon duty position, and now is our student engagement activities worker. Moving into the student engagement position this year, Heather has been a champion for our students, ensuring they have activities set up during recess to keep them from feeling bored, lonely, or isolated. She has set up an after-school program three days a week that draws more student interest than we have space for. Heather is dedicated to the well-being and happiness of our students and is constantly trying to find new ways to keep them engaged and having fun. She is always willing to help out on campus, no matter what is asked of her. Heather has organized new activities for Kindness Week, anti-bullying activities, and will be organizing activities for National Poem Month. We are truly lucky to have Ms. Heather at our school, and we are honored to present her with this award. Next, we'd like to honor our certificated employee, Debbie Crapo. Ms. Crapo began teaching at Burbank in 2007. She is currently a sixth-grade teacher. She has been involved in all aspects of our school community throughout her time here at Burbank. Ms. Crapo helps run our student council as well as our robust conflict manager program. Before school, her room is open to students who need a place to finish homework or just need extra help. She has been volunteering to help supervise our lunch area on a daily basis, as well as volunteering for after-school parking lot duty for much of the year. Additionally, she spends time tutoring students after school and has been instrumental in helping maintain our school garden. She is one of those teachers who never stops giving to her school. As one of her colleagues states, Debbie steps up again and again for all the little extra things that need to be done at Burbank. Another adds that Debbie has been such a wonderful person to work alongside. She's collaborative, dynamic, and inspiring. Having Debbie as a teaching partner and a friend has made me a better educator and a better person. We are so fortunate to have her at Luther Burbank, making the amazing impact with our students that she does. Ms. Crapo cares deeply about her students, making sure we are doing all that is possible to help them succeed. The impact can be heard in the words from a past student, Ricardo. "It was like I was a little seed, and she planted me in the soil, took care of me, and showed me what I need to grow up. I took the advice and eventually grew up into a big redwood tree." Thank you, Ms. Crapo. Ms. Crapo will be retiring at the end of the school year, and while we are happy to see her enjoy her next chapter, we will be very sad to see her go. Congratulations, Ms. Crapo, on an award well deserved.
Congratulations, Debbie.
And next, our student of the year, Jorge Jimenez Aguilar, and he is joining us via Zoom, hopefully.
Mr. Aguilar, if you're present on Zoom, could you please raise your hand so I can bring you over?
Luther Burbank is honored to recognize Jorge Jimenez Aguilar as our student of the month. As we reviewed the many deserving student candidates this year, Jorge quickly rose to the top. He is incredibly hardworking. He has moved from needing support with his academics to being one of the top math students in sixth grade. He has done this through dedication, a willingness to ask for help, and a drive to prove to himself that he can do it. Jorge is now someone that many students go to when they have a question about math. He answers with patience, grace, and a clear explanation. One of his teachers, Ms. Penya, states, "I started working with Jorge in third grade. He has grown into a responsible, hard-working, and intelligent young man with a genuine caring nature. Jorge is a role model and a very conscientious student. He has made excellent academic growth and has graduated from support services this year. I'm truly proud of his accomplishments." Jorge is also dedicated to his friends. Every recess, you can see him in the middle of the pack playing soccer, kickball, or whatever game they have chosen. He is kind, always smiling, and encouraging others to be their best. Jorge is willing to lend a helping hand to everyone. He is a positive role model and leader which others try to emulate. According to Aiden, one of his friends, Jorge is the friend who is always there for you when you are sad or upset. Another friend, Salvador, says that Jorge is a great person because he is always helping others understand math. Jorge and his family are dedicated to our school. This dedication to his school can be seen in the way he models positive, supportive, and caring behavior to all. Whether it is helping a younger student or a teacher, you can always count on him. The Burbank community is proud to have Jorge as one of our students. We thank his parents for their support and guidance in making Jorge a standout student. Congratulations. And now, we'd like to honor our Learning House recipients. So, our certificated employees of the year, Debbie Remmel and Cynthia McDaniel. I am honored tonight to announce the Learning House certificated employees, Debbie Remmel and Cynthia McDaniel. Last year, Debbie and Cynthia took a leap of faith during the pandemic to join a group of visionary people to begin a different kind of school. Together with their students, they have worked hard to form a cohesive community that really cares about each other. As a strong teaching pair, they have worked together to take the Learning House from its previous online format to an engaging in-person school. Their daily mission is to instill children, instill in children both a desire and sense of empowerment to affect their community for the better. Debbie and Cynthia have created an environment where kids have thrived, becoming readers, writers, and collaborators. Though there are many challenges in teaching AK through third-grade multi-age class, they have created a warm family atmosphere in their classrooms where kids guide and care for each other in the way siblings would, celebrating the successes each experiences. With a focus on group identity, sustainability, and outreach to those in need, they have worked hard to build several community partnerships, strengthening our growing school, and providing students with a unique educational experience. I am truly honored to work with these two enthusiastic and dedicated teachers. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And last, our student of the year, Hasael Morales. Learning House is proud to announce our student of the year, Hasael Morales. Throughout the year, he has consistently demonstrated the core competencies identified in our mission statement. Hasael was re-designated as English proficient this year while maintaining his home language. He is an enthusiastic reader in both languages and is reading above grade level in both as well. Quite an accomplishment. Hasael is a tenacious learner. When things are challenging, he doesn't just give an answer to be done or to finish first. He thinks it through and tries to visualize different ways of coming to a solution. Hasael has developed into a person who not only thinks critically but compassionately about his work and his classmates. He notices when others need extra support and encourages them without needing alcolates from his teacher. He exemplifies the kind of student we hope to grow at Learning House. Thank you, Hasael, for showing us what is possible. Congratulations.
Had a pretty infected smile.
Thank you.
Pretty impressive cheering section. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Welcome, Principal Schluter. Turning it over to you. Press the
There we go. All right. She made it look so easy. I would like to thank you for voting for us to be in person. As you can see. It wasn't me. I promise. I didn't do it.
We're all getting it. Amber alert. You can tap your phone. The show must go on, right?
I think my phone's turned off, so we're okay. Should I continue?
Please.
All right. Well, again, I want to thank you for voting to bring us back in this model. As you can see, it is very exciting for families to receive these awards and to celebrate here in person. And so, tonight, I'd like to start by honoring a very special classified employee from Rankin Valley Middle School, and that is our head custodian, Jesus Morales. All right, so Mr. Morales has worked for San Rosa City Schools for 19 years, and he's been the head custodian at Rankin Valley Middle School for 16 years. He's always willing to help and provide a positive response to the needs of others. He's deeply committed to his work and to the safety of our school, and he takes incredible pride and responsibility with regard to his job and the impact it has on students and the learning community. His colleagues say that Jesus is the glue that has held us together over these many years together. We always feel that we can call on Him and trust that when He is on the job, it will be completed with great care and attention to detail. Jesus also enjoys the relationships he has with staff and faculty and truly values each person individually. He demonstrates amazing respect and patience for all, myself included, being the new principal at Rankin Valley. The learning curve was steep this year. He also is very patient, especially to the students who at times can be challenging. He is a tremendous asset to our community, and we are very lucky to have him on our team and part of our Falcon family. This is the hard part. This will be Mr. Morales's last year in San Rosa City Schools, as he is retiring at the end of the 2122 school year. On behalf of all of the Falcons at RVMS, we want to wish him well in his retirement and let him know that he will be greatly missed.
Congratulations. And congratulations on your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You can see up there, he just, son just got married. Beautiful picture. So, I would like to now, I think he's on Zoom. It is my great honor and privilege to present this award to Mr. Ian Myers as our certificated award winner for the year.
Ian, if you are present on Zoom, could you please raise your hand?
All right. Were you able to bring him over, Ms. Flores? Are we good? Should I go? Okay. All right. So, Mr. Myers has worked in education for 24 years. He has taught history at RVMS for 23 of those years, so he's pretty much, he belongs to us over there. In all that time, he has always been responsive to staff and student needs. He loves to be involved in matters that concern campus culture and climate and is committed to continuous improvement. He takes his responsibilities seriously and has pride in the work he does and the relationships he builds. He is truly a trusted faculty member and a coach. Ian is also a teacher leader. He is the chair for his department, and he serves on the principal's advisory council, and he is a lead negotiator for SRTA. He is also a master teacher and has generously offered his time and expertise to teach the next generation of teachers. He also loves to coach, leading our cross-country team for 23 successive years. He has also coached track and field for 10 years. He also just returned from a World Strides trip to New York and Boston over spring break, where he traveled with a group of 174 RVMS students and parents. He always takes on extra jobs or attends extra meetings to help improve the education of our students, campus culture, and staff connections. Ian is a teacher on campus whom colleagues respect tremendously. He is the go-to guy with questions about schedules, requirements, teaching strategies, and technology. Whatever the question is, Ian will know the answer, or he will work to get it for you. He is the most, he is most deserving of this award, and I am happy to say that he is the RVMS choice for teacher of the year. Congratulations, Ian.
Congratulations, Mr. Myers.
Okay, and our final presentation this evening will be for one of our fantastic students, and that is Reagan McIntosh. All right. I'm delighted to present Reagan McIntosh as the Rankin Valley Middle School Student of the Year. Tonight, I will be sharing many of Reagan's amazing qualities, but I would like to start with the fact that she is a spectacular student. She has maintained a 4.0 all year long and takes advanced English and math courses. She has also maintained high marks all of last year, even through distance learning and hybrid learning. On top of being an academic, she is also an amazing student leader. She has been in a student leadership class for both her years at RVMS and has always been a great role model for her peers. Her favorite subject this year is history. She loves history because she likes to see how current events have been shaped by the past. For high school, she would like to attend Cardinal Newman and then Harvard University. She recently toured the campus on her New York-Boston trip, and this solidified her choice. In the future, Reagan hopes to be a nurse specializing in newborn intensive care, a noble profession indeed. Her friend Juliette Deal says, "Reagan is very respectful towards all people. She was always fun to be around, and I love how she is always making people laugh and is a very smart specimen in this world." No matter what, she always supports her friends and everything. Her teacher, Ms. Bathé, says Reagan is a smart and kind student. She is a model student and teacher and leader on RVMS campus. She always gets the job done and asks how she can help. I wish I had a classroom full of Reagans. She has a great smile and is liked by all teachers, friends, and peers. I will miss her next year, but I know that she has a very bright future ahead. Ms. Myers, her PE teacher, says that Reagan is an awesome student. She's always prepared for class and ready for a challenge. She never complains about what we are doing in class and gives her best effort. She is quiet, but her actions speak loudly. Again, she is a role model in my class, always following directions and puts effort into everything she does. She works hard to master new skills and learn new content. Reagan's a great teammate and partner. She gives feedback and encouragement. She is very helpful and kind to everyone. I know wherever Reagan is, that part of my class is running smoothly and on task. I feel lucky that I was able to have Reagan for two consecutive years. Reagan's parents say that as her biggest fans, this acknowledgement comes as no surprise. She has always strived to do well academically. She puts in the work to learn and do well in school. She cares deeply about others and works hard to be a good friend. She's funny, witty, likes to have fun. Her family couldn't be any prouder of the young lady that she is becoming. It has been my pleasure to acknowledge Reagan McIntosh as the RVMS Student of the Year.
Congratulations, Reagan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Schlueter. And congratulations again to our students and staff. So great to have folks here. So great to see the recipients of these recognitions. So thank you all. We're going to pause briefly for an interpreter switch. This will just take a moment. So bear tight. For those of you who do wish to leave at this point, you can definitely exit now. We'll just pause for a moment. Okay. Yeah. We'll wait for an interpreter. Have we been able to do the interpreter switch? Are we still... We're good? Okay. Before we continue, I just want to say the Q&amp;A function, this is for folks who are participating virtually, the Q&amp;A function is on right now, and we cannot interact with the public this way. So we cannot respond to the Q&amp;A coming in using this function. Do apologize, but it's just procedure. We're going to move on to C8, our school site parent organization updates. Joining us this evening for school site reports, we have representatives from Rincon Valley Middle and Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter. From Rincon Valley Middle, we have Amy Neeson. Is Amy with us, or is she... She's on Zoom. Great. If we could bring Amy over.
Ms. Neeson, if you are present... Oh, there you are. I will bring you over as a panelist.
Do we have you with us, Amy?
Good evening, Santa Rosa City Schools.
Well, welcome, welcome.
All right. Good evening, Santa Rosa City School Boards, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Trunell, and community members. My name is Amy Neeson-Kempiak, and I am the president of Rincon Valley Middle School's Student Teacher Parent Council, or STPC for short. This year, RVMS welcomed new principal Amy Schluter. And although we were sad to say goodbye to Principal Navarro, having a new administrator after two years of anything but normal has forced STPC into a kind of reset mode. Programs and events that STPC had sponsored and/or supported for years were not necessarily a given this year. So in conjunction with the new administration and the student leadership group on campus, we've started some new traditions. Leadership organized their annual color run for the beginning of the year, rather than at the end, which has been what they've done in the past. STP's organized parent volunteers for this event, as well as provided water and popsicles to all the students. This year, instead of a Halloween dance, RVMS had its first fall festival to better adhere to the COVID protocols. STP sponsored the snack bar, as well as a goat petting zoo, and the event was wildly successful. Our hospitality coordinators teamed up with the admin team to cook a homemade breakfast for teachers and staff on campus to show our appreciation before the holiday break. Needless to say, Assistant Principal Thompson's chocolate chip pancakes were a huge hit. STPC worked with Principal Schluter to restructure the Renaissance program. This year, we worked to create the High Flyer Falcon Student Achievement Award to honor students who received a GPA of 3.5 or higher each semester. In the fall semester, I'm proud to say that 199 8th graders and 176 7th graders received a special certificate, and we partnered with Ozzy's Grill, a Rincon Valley-based restaurant, to provide each recipient with a free milkshake. STPC has also continued to help fund beloved RVMS programs like Intramurals, 8th Grade Color Teams, 7th Grade Sportaroma, Math Counts, and Odyssey of the Mind. STPC organized a gift card drive for the staff during the holidays and kept the staff's supply closet fully stocked. We kicked off the new year with our new school-wide beautification event in early January, which brought out several RVMS families. Fueled by donuts and hot chocolate, students, staff, and parents cleaned up litter and debris for three hours. STP's family giving campaign began in November, and so far, RVMS families have generously donated close to $18,000, but we have yet to meet our $25,000 goal. We continue to focus on other fundraising opportunities. STPC has hosted several successful dine-in donates at locally owned restaurants like Cumin, Santa Rosa Taqueria, and Super Burger. We have high hopes for the end-of-the-year carnival, where STPC and RVMS academic departments and clubs will sponsor fun games and activities, while students also enjoy DJ Dax, the Kona Ice Truck, and multiple jump houses. And we're looking forward to the installation and dedication ceremony of a peace pole that STPC has purchased for the campus next month. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the STPC officers and board members for their time and their talents this year, as well as the countless parent volunteers who help make our school events run smoothly. Thank you to Santa Rosa City Schools Board of Trustees, Superintendent Trunell, and community members for your time tonight.
Thank you so much, Amy, for the update. Now, we have a representative from Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter School. We have Jenica Leonard. If Jenica is ready to join us? Great. If we could bring Jenica over.
Ms. Leonard, if you are present on Zoom, could you please raise your hand? Thank you.
I'll start my video now.
Oh, great. Welcome.
It's a lot of light. May I start, Mr. Sheffield?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. My name's Jenica Leonard. I would like to thank Mr. Sheffield, Ms. Trunell, Senior Flores, Stephanie Minieri, Lori Fong, Joe McCork, and Alegría de la Cruz. Thank you all for having me. My name is Jenica, and I am a 5th grade parent at Shracks. And first and foremost, I don't know if she's still here, but Heather is one of my best friends. So yay, Heather. So to update on the positives. Our trick-or-trot that we did for the first time in October raised $12,778.50. Our movie night that SFPO sponsored raised $7,641. Our family giving campaign is still going strong, and our boys' basketball team placed first in their league with only one loss. Thanks to the generosity of a few moms who have full-time jobs and multiple kids, our girls' basketball team is still in the running. They are up and going, which is amazing. It's a little disappointing that we had to rely on parents once again to make sure her girls get what they need. We were online to get a new school play structure approved, but apparently now there's an issue with an additional 10% funding from the district, even though the SFPO funded 90% of the structure. We're not naive to the fact that other structures at different schools have been funded 50% to 90% by the district, and we're paying 90%, and now we're being asked to pay another 10%. We recognize that we are a gifted population, but we also recognize that fair is fair. And to that end, even though it's a shared structure, RVMS has donated exactly $0, whether their parent group or the district, to this play structure that will be on campus at both campuses. I am happy to recognize that we are also getting peace poles installed, thanks to the district and other partners. I am happy to recognize Tori and Amy and also recognize that this year is not the easiest year to be either of them, following Ed Navarro's departure. However, based on recent incidences involving RVMS students, law enforcement, and other issues, I do think it's appropriate to note that Ms. Nelson, as capable as she is, is... That we could, we would appreciate a separate assistant principal for Shracks. I understand we share a campus. I understand there are different age levels. But to that end, I think it would serve SRCS to have a dedicated AP to Shracks, because Shracks is just a different type of school. There have been concerns about safety regarding RVMS versus Shracks. While they are treated as one campus, the needs of the students are obviously very different. So to the extent that we could have an additional admin on campus, I think that would be very beneficial. That said, I would have been here, but I have COVID after two and a half years. We appreciate the board. Lori, you know, we've been through it together. I wholly appreciate the board and what you all do. I think Shracks is a wildly underutilized type of campus, and I really hope that we can get some additional funding to truly make Shracks what it deserves to be. And with that, I'll say thank you.
Thank you, Jenica. All right. Well, thank you, Jenica and Amy, for the updates from Rincon Valley and from San Rose Accelerated Charter. We're going to move on. Agenda, Agenda Item C9. These are public comments on non-agenda items. I do have cards from folks in the audience, and what we're going to do is we're going to go through the blue cards first, and then we'll go to our remote attendees. So we have Natalie Hansen. And Natalie, if you can work your way down. And we have Cynthia McDaniel on deck, followed by Debbie Rumel, Laura Hernandez, and Shelby Pryor. Okay, if we could start with Natalie.
Hi. Good evening. Good evening and thanks.
Before you start, we're just gonna, we're gonna set a timer on the... So we do want to have... This is our opening night. We're gonna try three minutes, okay? Public comment. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the time to comment. I'm here tonight to express my support and gratitude for this small but mighty Learning House. I come here tonight both as a parent in this district and a professional in education to respectfully request your help in advertising our growing school. My son started in Learning House as a kindergartner in fall of 2020. Several parents in my social group thought I was making a mistake by enrolling him in an untested, quickly rolled-out, perceived to be experimental program. In my opinion, they couldn't have been more wrong. My son has thrived and has continued to thrive as a first grader at Learning House. What attracted me to this school was its thoughtful curriculum design and commitment to equity and social justice. My background is in special education, and to find a school that embraced project-based learning, multi-grade classrooms, and a commitment to building a caring and inclusive community was very exciting. By allowing students' choice in how they demonstrate their understanding through the various projects, as well as having peers at different developmental stages within the same classroom, made me believe that not only would my own son experience success, but the unique abilities and perspectives of a truly diverse group of peers would be celebrated. And yet, we need help to build these truly diverse classrooms. I'm here asking for your support in informing the larger community of this barrier-breaking program. We need more visibility on the district website and in the materials distributed to parents when enrollment time comes around. Your support is a key factor in how our school grows in the coming years. One of the projects the students accomplished this year was designing a logo for their school. With the support of their teachers, the students collaborated on each detail that went into this design. The primary image is that of a tree growing with all their hands reaching to the sky. Please don't stunt our growth. Help us continue to thrive and grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Next, we have Cynthia McDaniel. Cynthia?
I'm here to further... I'm from Learning House, Cynthia McDaniel. I'm here to further congratulate my student, Hasaya Morales. He is a very compassionate boy. He's a big brother of two younger brothers and one sister, and he brings that to our classroom. He's not afraid to tackle the hard things, to do the hard work, and ask the hard questions. He's really a privilege to have in my classroom. And as a representative of Santa Rosa City Schools' first project-based learning school, there are three other project-based learning schools in our county. One's in Sebastopol, one in Renner Park, the other at the Piner Olivet District. I'm happy to be here at the time when it was right to bring a project-based learning school to our school district. Project-based learning is a proven way to engage students' minds and hearts in their education. When we began last year remotely, it was to answer a need for students who might better learn in an alternative setting. We have transitioned well into an in-person instruction and look forward to sharing some of our Learning House news. We recognize that each child learns differently and uses a wide variety of strengths at different times in their development. We work hard to create a learning environment which is responsive to each child and to the dynamic of the group. The multi-age setting provides continuity and gives children and teachers a feeling of community and commitment. As children are grouped by interest and ability, there is less focus on competition with each other, more of a "we" as we work together. Their questions and thinking together have made our projects deeper, more meaningful, and ultimately, a success for all. We have been fortunate to work with a dedicated group of parents who support us both in and out of the classroom. Parents often express their appreciation for the way their child is being taught, both the intellectual part and the social-emotional learning. When asked what makes Learning House a good school for them, the children say that they're working as a team, that they're the helpers. They help the people, the animals, and nature around them. Debbie and I would both like to acknowledge and celebrate the courage, compassion, and hard work of all of our students at Learning House.
Thank you. Next, we have Debbie Rumel.
Thank you, Superintendent Trunell and the board.
I'm continuing on our little sharing with you. As we nurture our student agency and their ability to go out and do work in the community for good, we've established community partnerships with organizations. We've worked with the Living Room for two years now, which serves homeless children and their mothers, the Earl Baum Center for the Visually Impaired, Forget Me Not Farms, Luther Burbank Gardens, and the Council on Aging. These partnerships provide interaction that often nurture the children's ideas for projects, ways to help or change something in their community. These organizations are powerful mentors to show how people and places enrich the lives of others. Last year, while we were on Zoom for our very first project, children made kindness boxes, boxes filled with things a homeless child could use or appreciate, socks, chapstick, a new toothbrush, and stuffy, or a letter, and most of all, a letter that each child wrote. We had the children's names and ages, and we paired them that way. Um, and then Cynthia and I went and delivered them to the Living Room. This children, this year, children made and donated pieces of art to Forget Me Not Farm for their fundraising auction this spring. Um, we also did a logo for our school. We are proudly wearing that the children developed their, their values and their ideas, how they wanted to be seen and represented, and then we made a video about our process. On January first, it became law to put food waste into the compost bin. And Learning House kids decided that they wanted to be the teachers of how to do that and why it's important. Um, all the pieces aren't in place yet for us to do that, but um the video is soon to be released. During this process, the children learned the environmental science behind composting, as well as the science behind what happens when food waste is thrown in the garbage. They wrote and illustrated pieces explaining their thinking. They learned to make storyboards and create and edit video and audio. Learning House is a magnet school, meaning we are meant to attract students from around our district and beyond. The intention of those who envisioned our school was to provide additional choice for families. Our parents are excited about our school and tell others, who are in turn enthusiastic. That's how we've added new kids this year and our incoming kindergarteners next year. We need help making our school more visible. If people know, we think they'll come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Laura Perenos. And after Laura, we have Shelby Prior.
Hi.
Welcome.
Um, I am Hasayel and Leah's mom, and I chose Learning House for my children in 2020. And in the beginning, it was a little bit unclear to me what Learning House was, but after I read that it was a project-based learning, I was sold. It was the best decision that I have made, and I will stick to that. In Learning House, my children have gained so much. They make their own videos. They go on library walks. They make reading videos for the elderly. They go on field trips. They even went to go work on a farm. And they really go out to the real world to learn, and I'm very proud of that. They go to their environment, and that is definitely their third teacher. It is very rewarding to me as a mother, and I can't wait to see what their teachers have ahead planned for them. And I am here today to very respectfully ask each and every one of you to, for your help. We as Learning House need to be more visible to the community. We need local and targeted advertisement in publications and in places where families seek information about educational opportunities. And really, we really need to have our names out there. It's such a beautiful program, and it's like, when you find gold, you don't want to keep it to yourself. You really want to share it with everybody, and we have found gold. And like Helen Keller said, alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much. And like our kids say in, in our, in the video that they made, we are Learning House. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. And the last blue card, we have Shelby Prior. Welcome, Mr. Prior.
How are you guys doing? You finally get to meet me in person. I'm glad that we finally have reached the moment of equity that this county deserves. I appreciate the fact that you have taken the steps to designate yourself, to put yourself in this position, to hear people in the community in front of you and directly. Since the start of this pandemic, people have been pushing objectives that have made me as a person understand what segregation was about. I understand that people have their fears, but we cannot live in fear itself. That is not how this world works. I wish your microphone was a little bit taller, but I'll, I'll adjust. I uh totally can understand you guys have these points, and I totally came in here tonight with a clear idea of what I wanted to tell you, but then I started listening to some of the individuals who were giving awards, so I decided to throw an audible at you. One of the things that the woman said previous to this is that she would go ahead and honor a young woman for having the ability to go ahead and learn new material. I think it's pretty interesting that we've had six black presidents, and in this school district, we haven't taught a single bit about that. I learned that in sixth grade from, from a teacher who took the time to go ahead and educate me about where I came from. We make up two point seven percent of this population as black people here, and we continue to be talked about and disparaged in certain ways, terms like Latinx. Now you can see me in front of you and see my Malcolm X shirt, and I can give you a history of that. That history comes simply from the fact that we were black and don't hold our last names. We have owners' names, people who owned us. If you know Ted Johnson, that's someone who is not a Ted Johnson. His last name could be Banafa, but he doesn't have a clue. We continue to, I, I finally see you guys exercising your freedom by wearing a mask or not wearing it. That's how this should have always been taken care of. I have an eight-year-old little girl. I have a seventeen-year-old son. I do not want anybody in this room telling me how to go ahead and take care of them at their best. I continue to watch you guys finally make advancements like this, and we're going in the right direction. Let's try to figure out how we can continue to keep this momentum up and do the things that we're supposed to be doing, which is minding our own business and doing what's best for others by taking into consideration the fact that we wouldn't want somebody telling us how to live our lives. I don't know who believes in what here, but I understand the golden rule, and that means across the board. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Prior. So now we're going to open it up for public comment on non-agenda items for people who were joining us remotely, so we could start populating folks. If there are hands raised for people wishing to comment on non-agenda items.
So as President Sheffield said, if you'd like to comment on something that is not on tonight's agenda, this is the time to do it. Please raise your hand if you're attending online. And our first comment will be Nishali Zuniga.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre, buenas tardes, President Sheffield, Superintendent Anna Trunell, and Mesa Directiva. Mi nombre es Maxeli, y hoy me presento ante ustedes para exponer la falta de seriedad e importancia a los comités formados por padres-aprendices de inglés, ILLAC.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Neshel Zuniga, y estoy aquí para hablar sobre lo que se refiere. Um, we are, hi, good afternoon, I'm Nishali Zuniga. I am here to talk about ILLAC.
Por la falta de seriedad e importancia por parte de los administradores de cada sitio escolar.
I saw, I know, I noticed there is no serious action for administrators or people in the in the school outside.
Estas juntas significan la única oportunidad que la escuela me ofrece para participar y principalmente involucrarme en la educación de mis estudiantes en mi mismo idioma siendo yo limitada en inglés.
This is the opportunity that I have to express myself about those situations, and then I, I have this opportunity, I take it.
Este año se me ha dicho que los comités de ILLAC ya no son requeridos, y eso ha dado en consecuencia una cantidad de violaciones a los códigos y lineamientos que rigen la realización de estas reuniones.
They have told me that ILLAC is not necessary anymore, but that, that situation calls that many violations to the rules.
Nuestros hijos están sufriendo por la falta de personal y apoyo extra en las escuelas. Además, el plan maestro para los aprendices de inglés cuenta con ciento seis páginas. No está totalmente implementado.
We have a hundred and six pages in the system that they are trying to implement about master plan, and we really need support in the area of ILLAC.
Pedimos más transparencia con el presupuesto para el departamento de servicios multilingües.
We are asking more clearly, more clearly communication with a bilingual person.
Tengo cuatro hijos, de los cuales dos están en la universidad, y todo fue en gran parte por el, su éxito debido a la involucración que tuve o la información que me dieron en estas reuniones.
I have four sons, and two of them get out from the university. They graduate already from the university, and those graduation were tanks for that ILLAC.
Les pido, por favor, no solo pongan este tema en estos comentarios, sino en la, en la agenda, y hagan preguntas cuando les presentan los planes para aprendices de inglés.
I ask you to please take care of all this situation. It's really important, and they help us to growing up in, in the area where it's bilingual people or just Spanish people.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Storl. Catherine, are you there?
Yes, I'm sorry. I must have raised my hand by accident. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. Next is Solonic. Could you please state your full name for the record? And perhaps this is also a, a hand raised accidentally, but we'll wait just a minute. All right. Well, if you do want to comment, if you could please raise your hand again. Next, we're going to Caitlin Azderian.
Yes, well done with that last name. Thank you. Good evening. Um, thank you, Mr. Sheffield, Superintendent Trunell, and the entire board for providing this opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here today, as many have come before me, to advocate on behalf of my child's school, Learning House. When I asked my first grader what he likes about Learning House and the hands-on community activities that are part of his schooling, he said, everyone is kind most of the time, and that he's doing projects together as a class, and when he's doing projects together as a class, he feels calm. He feels connected to something larger than himself. He's beginning to recognize his responsibility and impact in the world. And that, in his own words, we're all connected to one another, connected to animals, connected to the planet, connected to Mother Earth. And that is what is so wonderful about this school, about what Cynthia McDaniel and Debbie Rumel are creating. It's the sense of agency that my child is developing at a young age. It's this sense of community responsibility, of kindness, of helping one another in concert with helping the planet, not just to survive, but to thrive. And I feel really strongly that this type of education, this type of community project-based learning, this curriculum, is what we need to meet this moment in time. A moment of so much global turmoil and unrest, and yet opportunity. It truly takes a village to raise a child, and Learning House has become an important part of our village, helping to raise and educate the next generation of caring, community-focused global citizens. But we can't do it alone, and so I ask for your help. I ask the board to help us bring more visibility to our school. Help us help families find Learning House as a magnet program by providing more visibility from the district website. Currently, there is no information on the district website in terms of descriptors for our school, and so it's very difficult for families who are looking for multi-age education, who are looking for project-based learning, to identify this option. We really would like to help families who are seeking alternative options, and we need your support to do that and to continue to grow. So please help us continue to positively impact the lives of our children and by extension, the local and global community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rafael Solano.
Do you want to watch this? Can we listen?
We can hear you, Mr. Solano, and we also have an interpreter. Is there an interpreter who can help us with translating, please?
Okay. Uh, sí, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Rafael Solano.
Hi, good night. My name is Rafael Solano.
La razón por la cual estoy aquí hoy es para, es porque quiero hacer saber mi inconformidad en la forma como se están llevando las reuniones de ILLAC en los diferentes plantelés escolares.
The reason that I am here is to let you know that I'm not happy with the way is that ILLAC meeting running.
En mi opinión, no hay un protocolo en cómo se realizan las juntas de padres con estudiantes-aprendices de inglés.
In my opinion, there is not protocol to follow up, to do that kind of meetings.
Yo creo, parte de la cuestión es que frecuentemente se están cambiando las personas coordinadoras de las reuniones.
Of my point of view is that many of the members of the board of that meetings are moving, changing. It's not permanent.
Y no hay un seguimiento al progreso o a las buenas ideas para seguir mejorando.
And they don't do follow up to the ideas of the situation that they are involving on those meetings.
Varias veces nos han hecho saber que los administradores encargados de estas reuniones reciben capacitación en cómo se debe llevar a cabo estas reuniones.
I have been informed that administrator have training to develop those meetings, and we don't see that. I don't see those developments.
Entonces, no comprendo cuál es la razón por la cual no siguen las reglas.
And I don't understand why they don't follow the rules if they have trainings.
Yo entiendo que tales juntas ya no son requeridas por la ley, y posiblemente esa es la razón por la cual los administradores no dan la importancia necesaria.
I have been thinking that the ILLAC meeting is not important anymore, and I think is the reason why the administrators don't take care of those kind of meetings.
Creo que les conocen que esta reunión es, es la única forma para algunos padres que se mantengan en contacto con la escuela.
I think those meetings are the only way to have a communication between parents and schools.
En muchas ocasiones, las escuelas nos han preguntado a los padres qué necesidades hay en las escuelas y cómo podemos mejorar la comunicación entre los padres y las y las escuelas.
In many occasions, parents are asking us, "How can we have better communication between parents and schools?"
Creo que esta es muy buena forma de hacerlo.
I think this is a better way to have a communication.
En el año 2008 fue cuando mi primer hija ingresó al kinder en la escuela Kennan Lane.
And in the year 2008, it was the year that my daughter started studying kindergarten.
Después siguió a Santa Rosa Middle School y terminó en Pioneer High School en el 2020.
She kept studying. She went to Santa Rosa High School and at the end, she finished in Pioneer High School in the 2020.
Actualmente, ella está cursando su segundo año de universidad.
She's actually studying in the university. It's the second year.
Por favor, continúen con las reuniones de ILAC en una forma ordenada. Gracias.
Please keep having that ILAC meeting in the way that we deserve to have it.
Thank you, Mr. Solano. Gracias. And Adina, would you please move a translator from Zoom over so that if we have another Spanish speaker on Zoom, it might be a little bit easier for the translation.
Thank you, moderator.
And do we have a translator from Zoom?
Marcela, if you are present, could you please raise your hand?
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, are we ready to continue with comments?
Yes, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Our next public comment on a non-agenda item online is Miriam Rojas.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Miriam Rojas. Soy madre de cinco niños.
Good evening.
Go ahead, Ms. Rojas. Veinticuatro, veinticinco, quince, ocho y siete.
Good evening to all of you. I am a mother of five children, twenty-five, twenty-four, fifteen, thirteen and seven years old.
Ustedes comprenderán el modo de veinticinco años cuando entró al kindergarten. Fue muy diferente la ayuda y el trato que se nos dio sobre ILAC.
You can imagine the treatment that we as parents receive when my twenty-five years old was in kindergarten compared to what is happening now.
Creo que nos merecemos respeto porque somos unos padres más atentos a nuestros hijos por la forma de hablar dos lenguas.
I think we deserve more respect and you need to realize that we are very attentive parents. We are really conscious about the role that our kids have learning and speaking two languages.
Tanto como padres e hijos, merecemos el respeto que se nos da en las escuelas. Necesitamos urgentemente que sigan apoyando los asuntos sobre ILAC y que den la capacidad a todos los directores de las escuelas.
Both our children on us as parents deserve and request more respect. It is your duty to give more responsibility or a clear message to the schools about the ILAC meetings.
Los programas que se están ofreciendo en este momento no son iguales como antes. Este programa es "Pasa la bolita y quédate callado".
The programs that are being offered right now or the conversations that are taking place right now seems to me like is, in Spanish, there is a term called "pass the little ball and be quiet", meaning you talk briefly about something and keep going, but no, you don't go deeply into an issue.
Creo que a todos los programas le están poniendo atención excepto ILAC. Todos somos iguales y merecemos este derecho como padres.
I think there are other programs that are receiving more attention. I cannot say the same about DILAC, but I can say that all the programs and all the parents deserve the same kind of respect and the same kind of attention.
Cómo quieren apoyarnos si no nos dan el programa tal y como se debe de dar para que nuestros hijos igual como mi hija universitaria lleguen a ese nivel.
How can you support us if the meetings, if the programs or the situations related with the meetings are not receiving the same attention and the same focus as in the past? There is a reason why my twenty-five years old is in the university. I don't think that the new generations are going to make it if we don't receive that kind of support.
No solamente hablo por mis tres hijos factantes. Habemos un millón de gentes parlo y latinas que hablamos español, inglés y necesitamos urgentemente que ustedes pongan atención sobre el programa de ILAC para que nuestros estudiantes lleguen a las universidades como es el pensamiento de cada papá y creo que el de ustedes también.
I am not speaking only on behalf of the three children that I have that are still of school age. I am talking on behalf, or I am speaking on behalf of the more than one million people in this country that are bilingual or are trying to be bilingual or are raising children that are bilingual and need urgently the ILAC program to be placed where it should be, where it deserves to be.
No quiero que ningún niño se quede atrás. Mi hija salió adelante con este programa. Queremos que siga el programa de ILAC para que todos podemos sobresalir como parloes, parloes latinos que somos. Gracias.
I don't want any child to be left behind. If my daughter could do it, thanks to supports like the supports provided by this program, all the children that are in similar situations have the right to receive this support as well. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next is Teri Martinez.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Teri Martinez. I have a second grader in Learning House and a sixth grader at Charter for the Arts. Worth mentioning that the sixth grader would have continued with Learning House if sixth grade had been offered this year. Talking today about why we believe in project-based learning and why we're requesting that the district help increase visibility so that Learning House can grow and continue. I read that our educational model has largely gone unchanged in 125 years. Meanwhile, our world is vastly different and continues to change rapidly. Information used to be harder to access and slow to be disseminated, but now we and our kids have a world of information at our fingertips. We aren't just training an army of factory workers anymore. We want to be helping kids figure out how to process all this information, to experiment and combine and weed out and rearrange and synthesize it into new creations and ideas that touch and help others. Our kids are not just vessels to be filled. We need innovators and out-of-the-box problem solvers who believe that their contributions can affect change and improve our communities and our world. We want to help them follow their noses and tap into their passions because when we are doing work that is meaningful and interesting to us, we are invested and engaged and we do better work. We don't want our kids to be clock watchers waiting for the school day to end, who then grow up to be clock watchers waiting for the work day to end. We heard from Ms. Rumel and Ms. McDaniel and some of the other parents about some of the projects Learning House has been working on. These, this is more than regurgitation of compartmentalized subjects. This is hands-on, real-world, interdisciplinary, working through problems, coming out the other side with tangible creations they can be proud of, seeing that their actions can make a difference in people's lives today, not at some distant point in the future. Our kids have great ideas and value to contribute right now. We all say kids should be taught how to think and not what to think. Projects organically teach us how to think, create, plan, assess, revise and improve. And projects at school give kids the opportunity to appreciate learning from others, with others and about others, helping them become creative, problem-solving adults who care about and value others. I think that's what we all want school to help our kids be. And I wish I didn't have to go searching for a special school to find this. I'm hoping all our schools will evolve in this direction. The district supported this approach when it launched Learning House two years ago. Now, we need your help increasing Learning House's visibility so it can continue growing and helping kids develop the gifts that already exist within them so they can go forward and unleash those gifts on the world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next public comment on a non-agenda item is Adrian Juárez. And Mr. Juárez, we have a translator available. And Mr. Juárez had to be promoted to the panel in order to give his comment.
Si me escuchan? Si. Okay, primeramente, buenas noches a miembros de la Mesa Directiva, Presidente Sheffield, Superintendent Anna Trunell. La razón de que estoy aquí como presidente, mi nombre es Adrian Juárez, presidente del comité de DILAC, para expresar realmente algo que está pasando dentro de nuestro listo de Santa Rosa. Reuniones anteriores, meses atrás, se ha manejado el tema de la importancia que tiene este comité de ILAC en cada escuela, ¿verdad? Lamentablemente.
Mr. Juárez.
Si.
Excuse me. Ms. Ronan, would you please translate?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Señor Juárez, acuérdese que todo lo que usted dice tiene que ser interpretado, entonces le ruego el favor que haga pausas después de que haga tres o cuatro oraciones y igual yo estoy tomando notas, pero pues para la tranquilidad de todos.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here. The reason that I am speaking to you tonight as a president is to express what is going on in the midst of our district. And this is concerning the ILAC meetings.
Okay. Como estaba diciendo, lamentablemente, este... En el momento que se maneja la información, que el comité ejecutivo ya no es requerido en los comités de ILAC en cada escuela, desde ese momento se está manejando la información de diferente manera en cada escuela. A raíz de eso, trae consecuencias. Días, pasan los días y han pasado los meses y no se les está provviendo el entrenamiento a todos los padres que estamos involucrados dentro de ese comité, ¿verdad?
Unfortunately, since there has been information circulating regarding that the executive committee is not required, this info is managed in different ways in each school.
Creo que la información se está manejando de diferente forma. Eso ha creado problemas, ¿verdad?
I believe that the fact that the information is not even, is not the same for every school is creating a lot of problems.
Me hubiera gustado, no sé si recuerdan anteriormente, les había hecho la invitación a miembros de la Mesa Directiva, a nuestro superintendente, que si podían acompañarnos en alguna de las juntas que teníamos en nuestro comité de DILAC para que escucharan las preocupaciones de nuestros padres, ¿verdad? Lo que está pasando en las escuelas. Desafortunadamente, este año se fue, prácticamente se fue. No tenemos este... Apoyo. Apoyo en las escuelas.
I would have, I have extended an invitation to all of you to attend the ILAC meetings, to listen to the worries that the parents are expressing from the different schools and to listen to the reports of what is going on. Because, as I said earlier, the information is not being managed in the same way for all the schools. The year is almost over. Basically, we could say, "Where did the year go? It's almost gone."
Todo lo que dijeron a nuestros padres creo que está resumido. Pero quisiera recalcar algo también. La escuela donde va mi niña, la elementaria, está esa comunicación de la directora con mi persona, con nuestra family engagement. Hacen unas llamadas, ¿sabes qué? Qué temas queremos tratar en la agenda para nuestro comité de ILAC, ¿verdad? Entonces, me gustaría que estuviéramos todos en un mismo punto, en un mismo camino. Que viera esa preocupación también de los demás directores o ayudantes de directores. Preguntar, ¿sabes qué temas quieres que tratemos? O las reuniones, estas fechas son apropiadas para nuestros padres, el horario también. Yo creo que nos va a ayudar en mucho, ¿verdad?
I cannot complain about the elementary school where my daughter attends. On the contrary, my wife and I frequently receive calls from the family engagement person or from the director asking, "What themes do you want us to address? What kind of topics you want us to present? This is great, but unfortunately, this is not happening in all the schools." I am talking because I am the one that receives all the comments from the parents. This is not happening in all the schools. And if we could all be in an agreement about what are the things that the parents need to be asked? For example, what dates work best? What is the schedule that works best? What are the topics that we want to address? Not only in one or two schools, but in all of them.
Entonces, yo les puedo pedir, de nuevo, vamos a tener una o dos reuniones más. Si podemos contar con su presencia, por lo menos en este fin de año, ¿verdad?, que se fue. Y espero que en el próximo año escolar tengamos en consideración estos puntos que hablaron nuestros padres de familia y que exista esa comunicación, ¿verdad?
So, I don't want to repeat what the other parents have said. I think they spoke very clearly. There are a couple of more meetings probably left for this year, the school years in course. So, I would like to extend again the invitation for you to attend these meetings and obviously for next year to have a sense of we are in the same line. We are all dealing with the same topics and all the schools are sending the same message to the parents.
Thank you, Mr. Juárez. I'm sorry, but we have reached double the amount of time we normally give, so we add that for the translation. But do you have one final comment, please?
Un comentario final porque hemos gastado todo el tiempo que no se nos permite.
Sí, mi último comentario final es si no existen estos comités ejecutivos que ya no son Sí, mi último comentario final es, si no existen estos comités ejecutivos que ya no son requeridos, por favor brindenos más apoyo, más apoyo en el entrenamiento a nuestros padres.
So if these executive committees are not required, are not going to exist, I want to ask you please in the most respectful way to provide us the support that we need with the trainings for the parents so we can be the agents or whatever we need to move on.
Thank you very much. Next public comment on a non-agenda item is Sheila Walker.
Hi, good evening, President Sheffield, members of the board, and superintendent Tornell and community. I really appreciate the parents who just spoke. And I also wanted to thank the parents and principals who presented earlier this evening. Congratulations to the employees and the students. It's interesting to hop on here and recognize people in the community that you know who were getting an award. Heather and I used to volunteer on some efforts together. And she was, she's with Luther Burbank and also there was a student named Reagan who I used to volunteer at her kindergarten centers. And so that's just amazing to see the kids growing and into leadership. I want to, it's interesting, my comments tonight echo the prior speakers regarding DILAC. I'm just like going to caveat into that, that there's a big stakeholder area missing in communications with the district and the board. And it's pretty glaring when you look down at the next section that you're going to be discussing. There are reports from people who work for the schools, the reports from the superintendent, there are reports from the board and reports from the CSBA, which is the state representation for the board. There's no parents and the parents represent the students. We are the largest stakeholder and for people to take time, like many of these speakers did this evening and like I've done and others that keep trying to do, we are trying to communicate that we, the parents, need to be part of this equation. We are stakeholders and we need to be taken seriously. We're not taken seriously when the board could have three or 400 parents on at a meeting and are all pretty much in agreement on something and then the board agrees to that in a public meeting with a set date. And then two days later, parents are told something different and it's never explained to parents why something was changed without a public meeting. So parents would like to be taken seriously. We would like, as the words were used, to be respected with our time and our efforts and trying to support the schools. Quickly, I just want to say that everyone on here should follow EdSource. It's a nonpartisan report. And before I run out of time, I don't know if everyone knows, but our eighth graders are testing at a fifth grade level. I don't know if everyone knows, but our third graders are testing, 60% of them are testing below grade level. And what is being done? I think the speakers, the Spanish speakers, what they want for their kids is exactly what we want for our kids. We want supports for learning and the learning loss, but yet we don't see anything. And we keep asking for supports and to be listened to as we are the biggest stakeholders, but we don't seem to have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. And President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised for this item. I think we might need to move a translator. Perhaps Adina knows.
Yes, thank you, moderator. I will need a moment to place a translator back in the Spanish channel.
Thank you. Just signal when we're ready.
We're all set. Thank you.
Thank you to all who spoke with their issues and concerns. I'm going to move on to the D items on the agenda, the reports item. We'll start with D1, California School Employee Association Report. CSEA President Mary Lehman, or Representative from CSEA. Mary, you're here?
She's on her way over on Zoom.
Thank you.
Oh.
Hello, welcome, Mary.
Well, this is fun. I saw the auditorium anyway, so we're happy to be back on board. Good evening, President Sheffield, Superintendent Tornell, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member, the Community, and SRTA. I want to thank our members for joining us for this hybrid meeting tonight. I want to extend appreciation to those who put this technology together and made it happen. Now we have a choice, in person or watching by Zoom at home with the family. We'd like to congratulate our classified employees of the month, Heather Rosales from Luther Burbank Elementary School that was seen her earlier, and Jesús Morales from Rincon Valley Middle School. Congratulations for your dedication and service. I am here each month to report what our members are seeing and feeling at their school sites and at their jobs. Who are these classified employees? They are Santa Rosa City School parents. Parents who have taken jobs in their student's school. Who always, we always say, we are here for the students. One way to support our students is by supporting their classified parents. These employees go above and beyond. These parents will often work through the breaks and do that little bit extra for the kids, for our students. Classified parents are the pulse that keeps the school moving. Our parents are struggling to survive in a place where the cost of living keeps going up. Paying our parents a competitive living wage has the best trickle-down effect there could be. It supports our students, our kids. I would like to invite the board members to go with me to your assigned schools and meet our classified employees. I will reach out to you for an opening in your busy schedules. Thank you.
Thank you, President Lehman. Agenda item D2, Santa Rosa Teacher Association Report, President Howell. Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to see you in person.
It's great to see you in person, President Sheffield, Superintendent Tornell, members of the board. It's great to be here tonight. Start with a congratulations to all the award winners from earlier this evening, our classified, certified staff and students. Great to see some kids in person. We've got a lot to be thankful for as we go into this last stretch of the school year. We're grateful for our three-day weekends that is allowing our teachers to push through these last few weeks. We're grateful for our negotiations that are ongoing right now around our bell schedules, which is allowing our school sites to make important decisions about what is the right schedule for their students and families. We are grateful for negotiations that we're going to start in the next few weeks around co-teaching for our students with IEPs to make sure that they're getting the best services possible. We're grateful that, at least in a few elementary schools, I've been hearing that more teachers are being allocated to cut down on the number of combo classes that are going to be needed next year. That is excellent news, giving people really good hope that the support for students starts at the elementary level. We're grateful, I've been grateful for some opportunities. I've been attending an elementary report card committee with a really amazing group of elementary teachers who are dedicated to creating a report card that will give more information to our families. And that has been an eye-opening experience for me as a secondary teacher to see all of the various things that go into an elementary report card. And I've also been attending the TK Planning Curriculum Committee meetings with an equally amazing group of elementary teachers who are putting together curriculum for the expanded TK that will be starting next year. So that's been very exciting and interesting for me. We're excited about the four upcoming LCAP opportunities for feedback and community input on the LCAP. And as all of these amazing things are going on around us and we have a lot to be grateful for, we can't ignore the fact that our teachers, our staff, our administrators and our students are at the end of a very challenging year. And we see that challenge in our Youth Truth data that you're going to be looking at later this evening. We hope that we'll be able to get more of that data and that we'll be able to really truly look at the data and figure out where do we need support? In what form and how are we going to be able to create situations for our struggling families, our struggling students that allow them to be successful? And also, how are we going to support our teachers as we work through burnout and early retirements and exhaustions and people leaving the profession? And just a heaping plate of unrealistic expectations that our teachers seem to be experiencing. So, thank you for all that you're doing and we'll power on through to the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, President Howell. Agenda item D3, Superintendent Report, Superintendent. Here's your report.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for those who have joined us in person and for those who are online. I have a few comments tonight, of course, starting with my, how many days are left in school or how many we've covered so far. Today marks day 147 of school for elementary and 146 for secondary schools. I want to highlight that the April newsletter went out yesterday via Parent Square, so please take a look at that. If you don't have access to Parent Square, please connect with your child's school site front office and administration to see how we can get you access to that information. We have four surveys right now that are out that we are looking for feedback from all of you. The first is the LCAP survey. And that is the district's ability to align our budget with all of our spending plans and state and local priorities. As we review the LCAP, your input assists us in providing our students with an excellent education. The survey is online. We are also hosting several stakeholder engagement meetings. The next one is actually tomorrow evening from 5:00 to 6:30 on Zoom. We're also offering an opportunity for input on our A through G completion improvement grant funding opportunity. This survey asks for ideas related to directly supporting student access to A through G courses to prepare them for college and career. A third survey is our transitional kindergarten survey. This survey is for parents of incoming TK students. And we're looking for parental and community feedback on that. And lastly, in partnership with the Sonoma County Career Technical Education Foundation, we're assisting in sharing a survey link related to how we can build opportunities around CTE or career technical education. And that survey actually closes this Friday. We've been pushing that out and we do ask for additional input if possible. My last comment is just a reminder that there is no school this Friday, April 15th. And with that, I hand it back to you, President Sheffield.
Thank you, Superintendent Tornell. Agenda item D4, Board President Report. I will be brief. Last week, I participated in a focus group discussion facilitated by Northern California Public Media, our local KRCB PBS TV radio station. So it's a great discussion on community programming, content, and potential for youth radio and even future internship possibilities. So there's more to come on this exciting piece of information. I also attended one of our Veterans for Peace Peace Pole celebrations at Lewis Early Learning Academy. This was wonderful event, a beautiful display of one of the May Peace Prevail on Earth poles right at the entrance of the school. And that is my report. I will look to board members for agenda item D5. I see, Trustee De La Cruz's hand.
Thank you, President Sheffield. All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I had the pleasure of attending on such a Chavez Day, the such a Chavez Language Academies, kind of their celebration of March 31st. And it was beautiful to see so many kids share their knowledge of this history through poetry and song and dance. And I really just wanted to thank the leadership and all the parents. You could really see what a community there was dedicated to celebrating this day and to making true the, what state legislation provides for on this day. I would say that the sad thing for me as a parent in the district was recognizing that neither of my children, who are not at schools named after such a Chavez, they did not, neither of them received one second of educational instruction about this history, about this leader after whom we have state legislation naming this day a day of education and community service. And so it really just for me highlighted that if we're not centering, you know, what we are trying to do as a district, then it goes invisible. And we recreate these systems of invisibility and of silence. And it was, it was a good reminder of how important it is for us to lift those things up and to take every opportunity we can to make sure that we are teaching ourselves and our kids our history and taking advantage of these, you know, very powerful pieces of legislation that remind us to do so.
Thank you, Trustee De La Cruz. Trustee Manieri.
I found the button. Okay. I was also able to attend a peace pole ceremony at the Lewis Early Education Learning Center with Directors Fong and President Sheffield. That was a really, a really great ceremony. I just really want to again congratulate our principal over there and the staff that made that happen and the folks behind the scenes who really put it all together and made that happen. So, and I also wanted to remind folks, if you don't know already, that this Saturday at Sonoma State University, the Latino Family Educational Summit is taking place. These will be workshops for parents, students, and allies who want to support children of color going into college or higher education. All of the workshops will be bilingual. There will be lunch provided and a lot of activities for little ones, so it really is an event for the whole family. There is a registration process, but if you Google Latino Family Education Summit 2022, I did that actually before making this report and I found it. It was the first link that pops up in Google. And you can go ahead and register online. And that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Manieri. Trustee Fong, did I see your hand raised? Nope. Trustee McCormick Coach.
I also got to go to a ceremony right here. All right, sorry. So right outside those doors, at the Santa Rosa High School Peace Pole Ceremony. And it was a really cool collaboration with our district and the school and the students. a really cool collaboration with our district and the school and the students and Rotary. And it was fantastic. And I just wanted to congratulate Dr. Clissold and Santa Rosa's ASB President Stella Clarkson, who was one of the emcees of the event. And there was a performance and speeches, and it's a beautiful piece of art also. So on your way out tonight, check it out. And I'm excited to see more of these going up. They said their, the mission and the plan is that every school will eventually have one, so it's pretty cool. So, thank you for inviting me and letting me attend that.
Thank you, Trustee McCormick. All right, other board members? Yes, Trustee Fong.
Just wanted to make sure we said that those peace polls also Rotary and Veterans for Peace. Yeah.
Thank you. All right. No other board member reports. Moving on to our D6 item, CSBA report. I think we're going to hold off on this till we get some things sorted out. So, that brings us to our E discussion items on the agenda. These are discussion and action items. We'll start with E1. This is an action item, public board meeting via teleconference per AB 361, the reoccurring agenda item. The board will consider the continuance of conducting public meetings virtually, including the use of a hybrid model as allowed in Assembly Bill 361. I'm going to turn this item over to Superintendent Trinell.
Thank you, Board President Sheffield, members of the board, those who are here in person, those who are online, staff and community. This is an item that we will continue to bring forward as long as there is a declared emergency in order for us to be able to utilize the hybrid model in order to conduct our meetings. As such and as stated at our previous board meeting, as we have transitioned to a hybrid model, it is still necessary for the board to continue to vote every 30 days in order to be able to allow for the online participation during our board meetings. And as it stands right now, as some may know, the city's chambers is now under renovation for technology needs and other things, and so it's not available to us in the month of April. So we will continue to find locations to meet if the board so pleases to continue in this model. And we will continue to inform the public of where those locations will be until we are able to return to the city chambers. And with that, I'll hand it back to you, President Sheffield.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell. This is an action item. I'm going to open it up for board member questions. Any board members have questions?
I'd just like to move to continue to conduct public meetings virtually, including a hybrid model.
Okay. This is an action item, so we're going to also go to public comment. Motion is seconded. Let's go to public comment. Are there blue cards on this agenda item in-house? I see none. Okay, open it up to those joining us remotely.
If there are any members of the public online who'd like to comment on item E1, please raise your hand at this time. There are no hands raised.
Thank you. All right, bringing it back to the board. We have a motion on the floor from Trustee De La Cruz, seconded by Trustee Flores. Ready for a vote?
Director Beard.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Flores. Director Manieri. Director Fong.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Moving on to the next agenda item, E2, another action item. This is a resolution in support of National Sexual Assault Awareness Month. April is National Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Tonight, the board will receive Resolution Number 2021-2248 in support of National Sexual Awareness Month for approval. Presenting the resolution tonight is Superintendent Trinell.
Thank you, Board President Sheffield. Again, members of the board, our community and staff, both online and in person. Tonight, we bring forward a critical resolution that recognizes April as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a time dedicated to raising public awareness about sexual violence and educating communities on how to prevent it. Victims of sexual violence often find themselves isolated without support from family or friends and in need of medical and legal services. The National Sexual Assault Awareness Month has been organized since 2001 through the nonprofit National Sexual Violence Resource Center, building on long-term efforts to support victims that dates back to the 1970s and earlier. This year, the theme is building safe online spaces together. Throughout the month and across the country, there will be initiatives and efforts highlighting the way that technology has become a part of everyday life, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. The board will be asked tonight to recognize April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month with an official resolution, excuse me, reflecting the board's continued commitment to work within the community to effect change and communicate support for survivors. And may I just add that this also needs to come with action, action within the district to provide resources and other information in order to provide support to our students, our staff, and our community. And with that, I present to you Resolution Number 2021/2248 for your consideration. And back to you, President Sheffield. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell. Board members, do we have questions at this time? Yes.
I had a question. Thank you, Superintendent Trinell, for mentioning that resources are needed, and I'm wondering if there's a.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell, for recognizing that there are resources needed to support our intentions that are reflected in these resolutions. And I'm wondering if there is a proposal for resources dedicated to increased investigation and support of survivors of sexual assault within our district? And more particularly, if there is a responsibility that we have to follow up on the ways in which really brave survivors have shared their experiences, you know, with students in our district, sometimes on district property, related to their assaults? And if those resources are dedicated to following up on those allegations and those concerns.
Thank you for the question. It is actually a work in progress as we identify who those team players will be to identify those efforts.
Thank you, Trustee De La Cruz. Other questions from board members? Yes, Trustee Flores.
Yes, in tandem to what Director De La Cruz mentioned, I like to see some sort of matrix or, you know, along with the action plan, what sort of interventions we're doing to make sure that we can follow through the years as to what sort of interventions we've had, what's successful, what isn't successful? And I know this is a, you know, a progress or something that it's in the works, but I'd like to see that, you know, in terms of just, in terms of having something more tangible that we can measure. Thank you.
Other board members? All right. This is an action item. We're going to open it up for public comment. The members of the audience did not see any blue cards. Do we have comments from people joining us remotely?
If there are members of the public online who'd like to comment on E2, please raise your hand. Joanna Perdomo would like to comment.
Hi, good night, everyone. I just wanted to say, well, my name's Joanna Perdomo, and I'm actually a counselor at Pioneer High School. And through my role, I'm facilitating a girls' group, and this is one of the topics that was really important to them. So at Pioneer, the girls' group came up with a definition around consent to bring awareness to the Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And it's actually being shared through the morning announcements, and the girls created posters that are around campus. So I'm really happy to hear that this is something that the board is looking to kind of bring awareness to. And yeah, I just want to say that I really appreciate it, and I'm really excited to share this with the group tomorrow.
President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you. All right, we're going to bring it back to the board for discussion, further questions or a motion. Trustee McCormick.
First of all, I'm very enthusiastic about this, and I'll definitely create a motion in just a minute, but something that we might also want to look into, I know it might be more of a collegiate athletics thing, but there is a movement called the It's On Us Movement that I know NC2A Athletics is very involved with, and it's all around sexual assault awareness and a pretty cool thing to get involved in. Maybe check it out. I know we have a lot of athletic programs in our school, might be some kind of cool that we could bring to the students and have them get involved in as well. And with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution in support of National Sexual Assault Awareness.
My second.
All right, it's been moved by Trustee McCormick, seconded by Trustee De La Cruz. And before we take a vote on this, I just want to further affirm the district's commitment by reading the final passage of the resolution. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Santa Rosa City School District hereby proclaim April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and encourages all faculty, staff, and students to increase their knowledge of the many types of sexual violence and promote an environment of mutual respect and dignity in and outside of their campuses. So with the passage of this resolution, we are also showing gratitude for the strength and the resilience of survivors, victims, and advocates. Their perseverance and their dedication to lift up those who have experienced sexual assault is so very much needed. So we are ready for a vote.
President Sheffield, could you please repeat the call in a second?
Yes, it was, the motion was made by Trustee McCormick, seconded by Trustee De La Cruz.
Thank you. Director Beard.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Manieri. Director Fong.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, moving on to Agenda Item E3. Yes. Celebrate this. Yes. Agenda Item E3, another action item. This is a declaration of need for fully qualified educators. The board will consider approval of the applications for the declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the Santa Rosa City Schools Elementary and High School districts for 2022-23. Presenting the request tonight is Assistant Superintendent Shepherd.
Thank you, President Sheffield, Superintendent Trinell, members of the board, Santa Rosa City community. We are requesting tonight that you approve our application for the declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the Santa Rosa City Schools, which will, upon approval, be submitted to the California Commission of Teacher Credentialing. This declaration must be approved at a regularly scheduled public meeting before we are able to issue limited term assignments and emergency permits for certificated staff for the 2022-2023 school year. It is our policy to hire fully qualified, prepared teachers for all district assignments. However, sometimes we have late resignations, retirements, and other changes in credential status of staff that leave us with shortages. And sometimes in some of those harder to fill positions such as math, science, ELL, ALD, special ed, we need to issue these permits and emergency declarations so that we can fully qualify staff while they're completing coursework. So, and without this ability to issue these declarations, we may not be able to fill some of our vacancies. So with that, I will entertain any questions that you have.
Board members, questions? I do not see any. This is also an action item. We are going to go to public comment. Blue cards, no blue cards, folks in the audience. All right, going to folks joining us remotely.
If there are members of the public who'd like to comment on E3, please raise your hand at this time. And Karen Wagoner would like to comment.
Good evening, everybody. Um, let's see, where am I going to start? We have a lot of really good qualified teachers, and I respect the fact that we're still going after more, but I'm confused as to why we have great teachers and yet some are being let go. So, that's, you know, that's kind of confusing to me because I see people as great team leaders, great partners, wonderful, you know, construct their classroom very nicely, and yet, you know, for whatever reason, they're told they're not a fit. And I just don't quite understand that. So, I would, you know, these teachers are not easy to find. They just don't pop out of anywhere. And when they have love for the students and they dedicate their life toward this, and it's heartbreaking to see, you know, our partners have to go. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. There are no other hands raised.
Thank you. All right, we'll bring it back to the board for further discussion, questions, or a motion. Trustee De La Cruz.
I'd like to move to approve the declaration of need.
All right, the motion is made by Trustee De La Cruz, seconded by Trustee Manieri. Ready for a vote?
Director Beard.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director Fong.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, Agenda Item E4, this is a discussion item, Youth Truth Update. The board will receive information on the Youth Truth Survey results. Presenting the survey results tonight is Dr. Armstrong, Associate Superintendent. Dr. Armstrong joining? Okay, there we go. What happens behind scenes?
Oh, thank you. Okay. Good evening, President Sheffield, members of the board, Superintendent Trinell, guests, and Santa Rosa City staff. Thank you for being here. We are here under Priority Six, Family and Community Engagement, to present youth truths for your discussion. So, let me cue this up. cue this up. Sorry, I guess it's been a while since I.
All right, this is, um, what to be expected on opening night?
All right. Thank you. Um, there are three parts to this presentation and I have included members from our community of practice team, Kesa Inamark and Eduvijas Yamas is joining us online. So if you can please bring her over, um, and both of them will serve as parts of this presentation. It's also important to note that Youth Truth is a national nonprofit organization based in San Francisco. They help organizations gather perception data and they have surveyed over two million people. Our presentation starts with a look at how we process and compare the data within our existing system, how we use the data to inform our work, and a look at our data while highlighting changes within the themes that, uh, we process the survey on. So with that, I will turn it over to Kesa Inamark.
Hello, everyone. Um, Santa Rosa City Schools is part of a youth truth cohort through the Sonoma County Office of Education. It's a three-year community of practice and there are nine districts participating. So far, we have participated in a youth truth training with a team, uh, from our ed services folks and that's been at SCO. We're looking forward to more of that time. We have access to and we have used youth truth coaching from the SCO staff and we are looking forward to the end of the year showcase of learning where we will share out what we have learned so far. Thank you. Uh, what's special is that we get connected to community partners. Um, our partners are the Ten Thousand Degrees Group and our industry partner is Providence Healthcare. Uh, these community partners will act as consultants, allies, reviewing data with us, helping us identify trends and thinking through a response in a joint meeting with Santa Rosa City Schools. They will be helping us think through which problems to solve and we're really looking forward to this unique partnership. The youth two surveys were given in a hundred and thirty-one school communities in Sonoma County. So that's sixty-seven thousand people completed the survey this past January, students, teachers, and parents and guardians. Apparently, it's the largest group taking the surveys that Youth Truth has. This is the Sonoma County, folks. Well, we're really also proud at Santa Rosa City Schools, we've had a steady increase of survey completion. So twenty twenty, twelve thousand eight hundred, moving then to twenty twenty-one, fourteen thousand nine hundred fifty, and then twenty twenty-two, fifteen thousand and thirty. Am I close enough? Okay. Um, this is a combination of results from, again, the students, families, and staff. The key areas across the student, family, and staff surveys are relationships, engagement, and culture. I gotta say it again, relationships like connection, engagement like learning, attendance, participation, and culture is way of life at the school, like norms and values. And when we compare the student portion of the youth truth survey, which is twelve categories, to the student survey in panorama, which is five themes, relationships is the one common theme that's found in both surveys. Again, the panorama, you may recognize me from those panorama, uh, presentations, but the panorama focuses on wellness and social emotional learning, hot topic this year, these days. Um, and those five themes are supportive relationships, classroom effort, positive feelings, challenging feelings, and self-efficacy. Um, so you'll see in this grid here, just a simple breakdown, you can see, you know, panorama, October, January is when we had families and staff participate in the youth truth survey and students. In the panorama survey, we know that the K through three is completed by the teachers for students and the students complete their own survey grades four through twelve. You'll notice that the panorama survey is what we call confidential. We can actually drill down and find the students that are in need of our support. Whereas Youth Truth Survey is an anonymous survey, we cannot drill down to find out who said what or who thought what. So it's really, um, a way for people to be pretty honest with us, which I appreciate and I think some people appreciate that. Uh, just notable that panorama survey, that counselors, administrators, and teachers can view and sort the data. We have a future trainer, training coming for teachers. And then the administrators are the folks that can see and access that, um, youth truth survey and they share with their communities. Now we'll turn it over to Eduvijas. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So how does this data inform our work for Santa Rosa City Schools? At the site level, these results are being used by site administrators to inform their site goals in the single plan for student achievement. As you heard, this data is available to site administrators who share their site results with their staff, students, and families through newsletters, meetings, and their school website. As district administrators, we are analyzing the data through the area of focus such as career technical education, really looking at our emergent bilinguals, how this informs the work that we are doing and most importantly, with the revision of our English learner master plan, our culture and climate work, to name a few. This data informs the actions associated with our, uh, district goals in the LCAP. Also, a few of our sites are participating in the Rooster Fellowship, which is a Sonoma County Office of Education initiative that looks at ways to increase student achievement through data and proven practices such as student empathy interviews. This year, all three of us presenting tonight are fortunate to be part of a team. Dr. Armstrong is a member of the Comstock Middle School Team. Kesa Inamark is a member of the Pioneer High School Team and I am part of the Elsie Allen High School Team. We are excited to inform you that Santa Rosa City Schools webpage with the youth truth results will be launched in this next week. Anyone will be able to access our district information, which will be categorized by elementary, middle, and high school and we will be able to look at the results by staff, student, and families. One important thing to note is that for this survey, students self-identified for demographics such as race, ethnicity, gender, and other subgroup information that is found in these results. I will now turn it over back to Dr. Armstrong.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And also, I just want to know that there are new slides that are a part of this presentation that wasn't uploaded last week and those slides are designated with a yellow box that says new slide. So depending on your screen, uh, this might be hard to see, but we'll do our best. So when I walk through the data, really what I want to show is the, are the themes that the perception data focused on and I'll call out, um, a change on at least one data point. And I also want to say that the tables summarize elementary, middle, and high. And originally, the first report showed only the bar graph for elementary. And I have since added the bar graph for middle and high, though I won't reference them. They were, um, it's there to show what that data looks like. So just a couple of things to pay attention. If you notice on the left side, it lists out the groups, the three groups that took the survey, student, family, staff. Then there are the survey themes. As Kesa Inamark mentioned, there are three themes that are in common and then some unique themes based on the group. Then you'll see the data that is in different colors and if you look across the bottom, you see a color key showing if the data is in the zero to twenty-fourth percentile or the seventy-five to a hundredth and everything in between. The other thing to note in the gray, you'll see numbers with an arrow either going up or down. And basically that indicates the previous survey's percentage, um, increase or decrease. Right? So this one snapshot shows you the cumulative percentages across all of the areas for all of the groups. And I also just want to reemphasize what Director Yamas said, which is the data will be loaded on a website. It's interactive. You'll be able to drill down by subgroups. And another addition that we'll add is the work that we're doing as a community of practice so that there are updates and relevant information to what's happening with, uh, the planning. Okay, so, sorry, I think I'm jumping ahead. All right, yes, sorry. There's also the average rate rating. So there's the percent and then there's the rating showing based on a scale of, um, one to five, how the ratings measured up. Okay, so this is a snapshot of the engagement, relationships, and cultures across all of the groups. So that's the three that we've mentioned. So I just want to go quickly through some of these slides and then, um, open up for questions. I know we have about forty slides on the data, but again, the, the purpose was to talk about the way the data is presented, what to pay attention to, and share what our work is moving forward. But I do want to pull out a couple. So looking at this slide, this was the COVID effect question. And one of the significant data points that we noted was in middle school students. So when they were asked the question, how much has the COVID nineteen pandemic affected you? Thirty-eight percent of the students responded about the significance of the impact and that's a decrease by fifteen percentage points from the last time this survey was taken. And then here's the bar graph that shows you that information in the years. You'll see some surveys with twenty twenty and missing twenty twenty-one, then you'll see others with just the twenty-one, twenty-two. So when you look across the group, and you see that difference that I, I mentioned from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two for middle-level students. Okay, another slide, uh, that showed a significant change was for middle school staff. So when they were asked the question, the degree to which staff feel engaged in their work and empowered to influence their schools, sixty-three percent of the staff at the middle level responded positively and that's a decline of fourteen percentage points. And again, the representing bar graph. Okay, move into another. Again, middle-level families. When asked, my child is getting a high-quality education at this school, sixty-three percent of them responded favorably and that's an increase of fourteen percentage points. And the bar graphs that complement the tables. Another area for middle school staff, when asked, my school sets high expectations for students in the culture section, forty-eight percent of them responded positively and that's a decline of nineteen percentage points. Corresponding tables. Okay, moving on to the next one, for middle-level students, when asked, the degree to which students feel they receive support and personal attention from their teachers, thirty-seven percent responded positively and that's a decrease of twenty percentage points. And you can see the snapshot right here with the middle level from twenty-one to twenty-two and we actually have three years of data on relationships. Okay, another decrease amongst middle school, this is students. So when asked, most adults in this school treat students with respect in the culture section, fifty-eight percent responded positively and that's a decline of sixteen percent. Corresponding tables. Okay. Another decline for middle school staff. So when asked, students treat staff with respect, forty-one percent of staff responded positively and that's a decline of twenty percent. And here is the bar graph for that. Okay, looking at another decline, middle school for staff. When asked, staff and students care about each other in the relationship section, sixty-nine percent of staff responded favorably and that's a decline eleven percentage points. And there's that bar graph at the middle level for staff where you can see that decline from last year. Okay, moving to elementary, elementary school students. When asked, the degree in which students experience an orderly, respectful classroom environment, twenty-five percent of students responded positively and that's a decrease of twenty-two percent. But still high on the overall percentile across Sonoma County. You can see how that's depicted on the graph. Okay, so this table shows questions about the respect for people of different, well, there's a variety of things, there's religion, faith, sexual orientation, gender identities, family incomes, countries of origin, learning abilities, um, race and ethnicity. And the snapshot shows the percentage of respondents who were positive and then of course, the declines over time. Okay, another percentage point is the staff of high school, the largest change, the thirteen percent. The high school level for staff, when asked, discipline in this school is fair, thirty-three percent responded positively and that's a decline of thirteen percent. And this is a, a one bar one from students where students feel welcome at their school and have collaborative relationships with their classmates. We have a decline at the elementary level, but an increase in both middle and high school, the largest being the high school. Okay, bear with me, I am wrapping up. So, as mentioned before, when looking at the youth truth data, we have over one hundred reports and it is filled with a lot of good information on how students, staff, and families are perceiving the quality of their education, the relationships, the culture. And when it's, the reports are available on the website, like I said, it's interactive and there'll be different filters that can be applied and some guides. The Sonoma County reports are already up and available on the, um, countywide website and we'll have a link to that on our website as well. We hear that the report should be available for us to load, um, by the end of this week, early next week. So we anticipate that data going up pretty soon. But we wanted to introduce you to our youth truth data and share ways in which we are unpacking and beginning to plan our work.
Thank you, Dr. Armstrong. Um, I, I think there's a lot of data here that we can extrapolate. So I am looking forward to also seeing the data on the website and using it interactively. Are there questions from the board? I see, and shoot up real quick, we're gonna go with, um, trustee Manieri first.
All right, thank you for, um, the presentation. I have several questions, so you can cut me off, President Sheffield, if it's too many.
No, no, no.
But my, my first question, so I understand that there's a data subcommittee, is that correct? At our district office- At our district office that is is looking at all kinds of data. I'm wondering if this committee is looking at this youth truth data to to talk about the numbers, to talk about the data, to maybe do some analysis. And and I don't know, get prepared to bring some recommendations back to the board. I'm just wondering what kind of work is being done with regard to the data.
There are, under our superintendent's direction, there is a committee across multiple departments serving as a data group. And Youth Truth is a data piece that's listed as something that we're going to dive deeper into in preparation of a future study session.
So as as we began to dive into this data, thank you to the team for presenting. As we began to dive into this data, we realized, one, that last year's data was not presented to the board for a variety of reasons, I believe. And that it was imperative that we bring this information to you tonight as we start to engage with the board in additional data conversations. So we have a stellar team that is looking at how, and we've presented on some of this data at a recent conference so that we can start to understand what is the data telling us? Why are there trends, especially when we see drops in positive perception of various pieces of this data? And what are we going to do about it? So those will be our cross cutting lenses. And also, what resources do we already have allocated for this work? And additionally, what else might we need? So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
All right, my mic like turns off when I don't want it to.
It overrides.
Okay, it's still on. Thank you for that response, Superintendent, that actually answered like three other questions that I had. I have also a question around the train, around training for site administrators. So I understood from the presentation that site administrators have access to this data. So I'm wondering what kind of training is or will be offered to them also to analyze, interpret and share the data. I was really interested in seeing that they're also able to share this data with with their communities, with their families, their students. So yeah, if anyone can speak a little bit more to that.
Yes, so I will say that many schools have already began unpacking youth truth data with their staff. You've probably seen some of those in the board report as a data piece. And if you haven't yet, I'm sure you'll see some coming up. Me and the team have been able to attend some staff meetings and watch those presentations with teams unpacking. So for the countywide initiative, we were giving a toolbox, if you will, with lots of videos and resources on how to unpack the data, how to present the data. And so that's pretty much been the access that administrators have. We hadn't had necessarily a formal training. But all the resources that they need to understand the data, access the data and push it out. As soon as the data became available to us in late February, we started to push out to the site and encouraged staff to get in front of their teachers with the information.
I could
Turn it itself off again.
For me, I can add that the principals are almost, they've increased their fluency with youth truth. The folks that have been around for a while, because this is their third time seeing youth truth data, where some of the folks at the district office may not have had that access. And so we're learning together and teaching one another. And I see those informal conversations and people teaching one another, which I think we're getting pretty good at. From Ares to Panorama to Youth Truth.
And if I can add something. Back February twenty-six, when we came together and this data was presented to us. Although our team went to Sonoma County Office of Education in person, all of our principals were attending virtually and were able to unpack the data as we were getting it sort of as a big consortium. So they, I can say it wasn't an extensive training, but it was a reminder of how, step by step, how to access the data and how each of them had access to their own reports.
Thank you. I think I'd be interested in in knowing if any of our site administrators feel like some additional training is needed for them to be really effective with with this data. And to Director Yamas's comment, I have another question related to that. My last question is whether or not all of our site administrators, if there's some sort of not requirement, but how do we make it uniform or consistent throughout the district that all site administrators are utilizing the data? So it's not, you know, a self-selected group who's really interested in data and loves to learn about these things. But that it's it's all of our site administrators who are really looking into this and trying to understand what's happening with our students.
I I can answer, I know that we've been having conversation, conversations about this with Superintendent Trinell, with our cabinet and just our team in terms of we we all have to really own the data that we have access to and begin to really understand it so that then we know how to best support the sites and help them understand the importance of the data. And our superintendent, we've really talked about really understanding the different steps. We have to understand our why and really what we're looking at to be able to make decisions on our what and our how. And so I can say that more than ever before, I really feel that we are coming together collectively at the district level with different departments to really look at the data and to really understand all the data we do have access and really what data we still need. And then begin to collectively support each other with understanding to be able to support the sites because that is where the impact is happening.
Thank you. At the elementary principal meeting yesterday, I could see on the agenda, there was a youth truth. And there was a very simple document, which was about accountability. And every single elementary site had to list, how are you responding to the youth truth data? Who are you sharing it with and what are your next steps? And so it's a piece that's just like transparency, a little bit of positive peer pressure, where schools that are, you know, they've been principals for a while in the district, they know what to do. And then the newer folks can say, oh, I trust that person. I like their judgment. I'm going to do what something they've done. So it's like sharing with high support and accountability in that.
Right, and then just to to close out that part, it's just we're constantly asking the question, how can we present data in a way that responds to our needs in real time and quickly? And so I know you've heard me mention a couple of times that data dashboard. But we certainly see not only our panorama data, but our youth truth data being something that's easily accessible and presented with other data sets so that we can begin to make strong claims about how well we're serving students and where we need to grow and improve.
All right, thank you, trustee Manieri. Trustee De La Cruz.
Thank you. I love this stuff. I'm such a data geek and it's so, it's so rich. So I loved hearing, thank you so much, Director Ennamark, around the ways in which this data can be disaggregated by site. I know this data is likely also to be able to be disaggregated by race, ethnicity, gender on top of school sites. And that would be something that I'm really excited to see in terms of how we're filtering different experiences based on who you are and how you feel you belong in the, you know, in the school site. I'd also really love to see if at all possible, if there's a way for us to understand, how are we landing up to other districts? So one of the things that we did recently with the updated portrait of Sonoma was really allow us to do that comparative study to other counties, to us as this, you know, how does our county line up with the state and with the nation? And then also understanding that there are certain conclusions that change really dramatically based on who you are. And so averages tend not to be as useful as understanding kind of more more directly what's happening with specific populations. So I'd love to see if there's a possibility of doing that at some point. I think another question. Stephanie, thank you so much for asking about how to support folks to be really fluent in this. And I I think my last question is about how are we using this to recognize that there are strategies that could be attached to each data point to turn the curve, right, to 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 turn that front upside down to whatever, whatever the thing may be. And so I'd really love to see if there's a way for us in the future to say, this data tells us this, here are the strategies that we're employing to change those outcomes. And if there's particular strategies for particular populations, how is that included in the way that we're looking at the data? So thank you so, so much for this work. And I'm really excited to hear more about what are our conclusions? How are we interpreting this besides just hearing kind of the raw numbers?
Thank you, trustee De La Cruz. We're going to go to trustee Medina and then to trustee Fong.
Thank you. I had a people since on first in terms of like this stat is the way of correlating this data to like results in terms of academic success or lack of success. And in terms of
Trustee Medina is kind of fading in and out.
Okay, thank you. Is there a way to correlate this data, how these feelings to how students are doing to academic success or is there plans on correlating that data?
Right, I believe the question is, how can we compare this data with how students are doing academically? Because the survey is anonymous, we don't have a common data point to be able to match student ID numbers and be able to blend data that way. So no, however, we do have the panorama survey where we are able to layer in the information from that survey into academic and attendance data.
Okay, the the other question that I had was, in terms of participation, was there, is there a way to see like how many people participated in different languages? Was there low participation in maybe like Spanish, was it done in Spanish? Can we kind of know that type of information in terms of how well the outreach was done?
I believe the question was on participation in the survey. I don't have those numbers offhand. I can tell you that there was a threshold that we needed to meet as part of the county collaborative. And when we had a couple of schools that were below that threshold, we had a team of people out there with clipboards and encouraging families and to take surveys as well as pushing information out to sites from about November through January when the survey closed.
That answer kind of sounded as it was related to participation overall. I'm specifically focused on English language learners and or their parents in terms of how engaged they were in terms of how they feel. As a result of the status, is that data captured here? Or did we do a good enough job in capturing that data? It's kind of what I'm trying to ascertain.
Yeah, I don't think it shows the number of respondents. Although we did, families and students were able to self-select demographic information, but we don't have a raw number that shows that number. I can go back and see though, actually, I'm not sure.
The only piece I would mention is that we did have higher rate of responses from students. I know that we gave class time to make sure students were doing the survey. And staff members at most sites were given time during their staff meetings. But we didn't get as much participation from the families as we had hoped. And I know that the survey is a little bit long. I had that experience as a parent.
What was the engagement with the ELAC and ELAC committees in terms of putting it?
I can answer that. I know we presented in one of our D-LAC meetings, the importance of this youth truth survey and provided the link for them. I am, I anticipate, or I assume that given that ELAC are at the sites, that was part of the sites. What am I trying to say? Recruitment for their own site and for their own teachers, own parents. I totally lost words. I'm thinking Spanish and I can't put it in English. But at the sites, we were, when we were looking at how how many site participation we had, we were actively connecting with the site administrators to inform them of their participation and to get them to then send out more information through Parent Square and the newsletters and stuff to increase their participation.
And my final question is just around the cost of the like staff hours, time and the cost of collaborating this. I don't, I don't assume there'd be an answer now, but if if we don't have that, could we maybe have that information in the future? I'm just curious to know how much this is costing. It sounds like we've been doing it for a few years and there's more work to do. Thank you.
By being part of the collaborative with Sonoma County, the costs were significantly reduced. It's six thousand a year, each year for the three years that were in the collaborative.
I I mean, also the the time in staff hours and all of that. Some sort of estimate, I'm just curious how much it's costing the district to do this.
Yeah, we we didn't, but that's something I can work on it.
Sorry, I think I cut you off. That's not something we were prepared for tonight, but we can certainly do some estimations.
Any further questions, trustee Medina?
No, thank you.
All right, we have trustee Fong.
My questions have been asked and answered.
Trustee Flores.
Thank you. Let me see, I don't know if I heard this, but since I I didn't have the panorama, you know, slides, and thank you for including them in here. But maybe this is for a follow up, not necessarily a question. But what sort of, you know, intervention systems have we have, have we put in place thus far to 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 make sure we address the need of our students that have had, you know, great trauma, right? I know in certain schools, you know, there are teams already in place with tier one, tier two and tier three interventions. And then I'd just like to hear a little bit more about that. Maybe not tonight, but that's something I'd like to like have it in a report in the future. It's just just to know how we're using the data to make sure we address those needs that we're seeing. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Flores, board members for the questions. All right, this is a discussion item. We go to public comments. There are comments from people joining in remotely.
If there are members of the public who'd like to comment on item E four, please raise your hand at this time. There are no hands raised.
Great, thank you, Beth. All right, bringing it back to the board for further discussion or questions, trustee Fong.
Thank you for the work on this. I think it's an incredible amount of data that we need to use. It should go hand in hand with our student achievement data. And looking at the data that superintendent Trinell sent out to us and that we have here, it's interesting to note where there's a lot of coherence between what students are saying, families are saying or staff are saying. It's equally noteworthy that there are discrepancies. And so I hope that we are looking at that. Kids are thinking one thing, staff is thinking another. That's a place we really have to dive in. I really want to echo trustee Manieri's comment about how we. Oh my gosh, I lost my train of thought. How we dive in with professional development and how we make sure that. All schools, all leaders are using this data and not just those who are interested. Because it is so important when we're asking for, for our stakeholder voice, here it is in front of us. It's incredible data. I've never seen this data in 40 years of education and we have to use it. This is what's going to tell us why we are succeeding or not succeeding in A to G. This is why this is going to tell us why kids are graduating, not graduating, getting Fs or not Fs. And we have to listen to our kiddos and we have to listen to our families. We cannot discount the data that we are getting. I really am proud of our, our stakeholders, our students, our staff, our administrators, because there's a very high percentage who, who did the surveys. And I can only imagine that it's going to continue. So thank you for the leadership on this. Maybe we can just say goodbye to the California Healthy Kids Survey. Which no one looked at ever. Also, we need to really dive down and it has to be at the sites. As to our subgroups, because that data is there. So what is happening with all of our kids? I'm just going to give a shout out to the API kids who look like they're doing well and may not be doing well, right? English language learners, special ed, everybody, transgender kids. The data here is. It's really incredible. So thank you for the work. Let's dive in, let's dive deep. And we want that kind of report back. We want to know how is it making a difference? What is changing in schools to make that difference because of this data? So we'd like to hear that back the next time around. Thank you again.
Thank you trustee Fong. Other board members? Just be Flores.
Yeah, I just want to echo that and I'm not going to reiterate what they said, but. One of the things I've seen in other school districts is that they're, they're, they're reporting. Survey fatigue also, I just, you know, want us to be cognizant of that, you know, a lot of our students are reporting like, okay, I'm just, this is yet another survey, right? So just be cognizant of it, just as a counselor, I, I keep hearing that. That students are not taken seriously because they're just so fatigued as to how many services they've taken. And this is not thing to say about San Antonio City Schools, this is my own school district, right? So I just want you to be aware of that. That's what I'm hearing from my kids. So, thank you.
Thank you trustee Flores. Other board members? Or, oh, we have trustee De La Cruz, yes.
I would love to see if there's a possibility for our, kind of for this. Data analysis and conclusions to be rolled into our curriculum in any way. Like how is this really relevant to our kids and what they're learning and understanding about their education? And also about what their role in changing some of these outcomes is. So I, you know, I know we're talking about kind of stats for social justice. We're talking about, you know, ways that we're really including this kind of relevant information in the education that our kids are getting. And I can't imagine something more relevant than. Them being engaged at this level with data that's theirs, that they also feel empowered and kind of activated around using it. To change their experiences.
Yeah, thank you trustee De La Cruz. I, I was sort of thinking along the same lines, but I'm wondering how. Students might be able to use this data, the students using the data to sort of. Drive their own narrative, to be able to, to find a way to tell us. Their interpretation, what they see is going on. Thank you. Other board members? All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Armstrong. Thank you, team. Looking forward to the district diving in and all of us working with this data, using it to guide us in policy. And bringing it back as a future study session. Thank you again. All right, moving on to agenda item E5, a discussion item, LCAP timeline. The local control and accountability plan outlines the actions and services being carried out. Throughout the year to help reach district goals for students. Tonight, the board will receive information on the LCAP timeline for stakeholder feedback. Presenting the timeline to us is Dr. Kimberly Armstrong.
Great, thank you. Well, really the attachment is in the agenda and I don't have slides to present. I figure I just call the item up, the attachment. It's a PDF and on it, it is a two pager that outlines our goals. The three goals that are in the LCAP that I know you all are familiar with. And our timeline for collecting feedback. So just a note, and I heard superintendent Trinell open about the survey. It closes on May 10th. I'm excited to say that it's been 24 hours and we already have 125 respondents. When combining the English and Spanish translated survey. We're also going to have the translated LCAP added to this document. It should be ready in a few days. We noted that the LCAP from last spring, leading into the fall, were not translated documents. So we'll be adding that on there. We also have the mid-year update in both English and Spanish for community to access and review. And on the timeline side of the house. We have already had one conversation with the district advisory committee in late March. And we have a meeting coming up tomorrow night. I heard superintendent Trinell reference that. And it's really an opportunity to spend an hour and a half with the community on not only the goals, but the themes. And one of the reasons why Youth Truth came before this is just for an opportunity to share. How we're being mindful about collecting feedback across multiple themes and how we're using that information. To inform our work. So at the conclusion of the survey on May 10th and our last stakeholder feedback meeting on May 5th. We will then spend the rest of the month doing revisions and updates. And then we'll plan for some public presentations. Before getting to the board meeting for discussion and action. Then of course that approval starts our process back July through January, taking us back to the mid-year update. And ready to begin the process all over again. So we wanted to make sure you have that information and know how we are being mindful about collecting feedback. Across our stakeholder groups. And of course, I definitely want to mention the partnership with Catherine Howe. Making sure that teachers are present and a core part of information as we move forward in these stakeholder feedbacks. So I just wanted to take a moment to appreciate her and being flexible with our calendar. And helping get these dates going so that we can be in good conversation together.
All right, thank you, Dr. Armstrong. I want to go to the board for questions, but I'm going to ask a question. You guys all get to ask really good questions and by the time it comes to me. I kind of just, you know, nod and say, you, you said it all. Just, just a real quick question, because Dr. Armstrong, you talked about stakeholder feedback and I. You know, more feedback always best. I know this closes on May 10th. And we've already started to get feedback. I'm just kidding. Can you talk a little bit more about getting that feedback? How we're going about, how are we getting quality feedback? What are we doing to, for outreach? Making sure that we're getting as much stakeholder participation as possible?
Hello? Okay, there we go. So of course we have the meetings going on, so we'll have the 90 minutes. We have the ed services team joining in. We plan on doing breakout rooms so that. We can be prepared for large groups. We can reduce that size so that we can ask questions to help drive the conversation. And from that, we'll be taking notes and collecting that as a data piece. As well as talking about the survey and the importance of the survey. You know, one of the areas that we know that we need to work on and is definitely a priority. It's priority six, family and community engagement. But it's making sure that we're accessing ambassadors, if you will. Out in the community to help be able to message and. I guess solicit feedback in ways that are non-traditional and more community based. And I think we heard that in a few different ways across different groups. And that's something that we're highly committed to. You know, unfortunately, we know that a couple of our schools have been without family engagement liaisons. And for some of our sites, that is the only connection that they have for a bilingual staff person. And so we've been able to. Find and feel some of those holes that we've had in our schools with the work from Dan Bigelow and his team. But we know that it's not enough. So we are constantly talking about ways that we can create feedback as a ed services team. We meet for two hours once a week. And our conversation is on how we can improve the process for LCAP. And access all the resources that we need to access.
Thank you, Dr. Armstrong. Any questions? Oh, yes, please.
I'd like to add to what Dr. Armstrong shared. With the current LCAP process being a three-year process now, technically speaking. We do not need to collect feedback and update our LCAP until we approach year three. However, as a system, we are working to make those adjustments year to year. So that adjustments that we have based on the funding that we have is relevant for the students that we have now. Versus those that will be serving over time in the next three years. So I just wanted to applaud our team for their efforts. And I know that there's always more that we can do. I appreciate Dr. Armstrong's speaking to. Needing to be out in the community. This is not a one-way street. We need to be visible and find opportunities to gather that input in other spaces in our community.
Thank you. Trustee De La Cruz.
Thanks. I was recalling our February mid-year update. And I remember that we had asked for some information about kind of where are we hitting our goals and some data. And some better understanding of, you know, this money hasn't been spent yet, but it's being programmed in this way. And kind of some more, some more. I would say relevant and updated information that tells us where we are on that process. And so my question is, is that some, is that like a, a document or part of the presentation that we will engage with our community? Because I think what we present to them is really needs to provide that level of details. So then they can provide us feedback as to whether or not those strategies or those investments have. Made a difference for them and for their children. And so I just, I wanted to know a little bit more about the status of that. Of that reporting and of that data presentation.
To work on my button push in. Yes, we, in the survey, we have the amount that the 7 million for goal one, 5 million for goal two, 7 million for goal three. And some change, that's a rough estimate. We have that in the LCAP, but the actual breakdown of the dollars in the action item is. On the mid-year update linked into that document. So there would need to be an access of the presentation. But at the stakeholder feedback meeting, we will also talk about the total amount that's spent on each goal. But we also need to make sure that we're not misleading with that number because there are some staffing that is included in that number. So where it may look like there is 16, 17 million to spend roughly. There might be a certain amount that's allocated to staffing and that then dollar amount is different. But also I want to emphasize that the staffing is going towards those goals and helping. Us to be intentional about our work for the action items that are listed out.
Yeah, I guess what we, what we talked about last time in the February mid-year update was kind of like. A matrix where you would be able to see kind of goals. And then progress in each of those goals. And, you know, like I know the LCAP, I'm just going to say like. College and career readiness. Our goal is to have, you know, advanced placement enrollment, 809 by 20, you know, between 2019 and 2021. And how are we doing on that and actually reporting in a way that's very transparent for people so that they can see. And we can see, right, without having to dig around in some of that data as we did in February. What, where we are. And so just, just wanting to know about, you know, again, how we're laying that out for people to really see clearly and to understand our progress. And how we're measuring it.
I'm going to just take that. I think that a part of our process, and I remember that request. I think that part of our process is to be able to gather input, some input now from our various stakeholders. And to present some information to you in June that gives you some update as this is not necessarily a mid. A mid-mid over the course of the three years, but to, to let you know where we're at before the new school year starts.
Thank you trustee De La Cruz. Trustee Medina.
Thank you. First question I had was. The, the parent square paper that went out, well, at least that I received, unfortunately it included a link to the 428 Zoom meeting. But I'm wondering for the, for the DLEC. I'm wondering, are, are all these meetings, stakeholder meetings accessible with both English and Spanish? Will there be breakout groups by language? Or is the DLEC meeting the only opportunity for special participants to participate? I don't know if anyone's talking to me or anything.
Director Medina, Medina, would you mind just repeating the question?
Yeah, so the 428 meeting, that's just DLEC as one of the meetings. I'm, I'm assuming that Spanish will be a language option at that meeting, but I'm wondering, are the other stakeholder meetings? Going to be accessible to people that speak Spanish? Breakout into Spanish also, or is the 428 meeting? The only opportunity for Spanish speaking to participate in Spanish?
We will have translation at all of the meetings.
I, I'm curious as to. I see all the meetings are about 90 minutes long. I'm wondering kind of if, if we can give like a rough agenda of what the meeting would look like. Because I know when there's a lot of translation going on, obviously it, it takes longer. So I'm curious as to how, how effective those will be. If, if we're doing a lot of translation.
These, one of our strategies for making sure that we're accessible to our stakeholders. Is when we do our breakout room, having one of the breakout rooms, that's a Spanish-only breakout room. But we'll also have translation, I'm sorry, interpretation available for each of the meetings.
Okay, that's kind of what I was trying to find out, if the breakout rooms were also being staffed. So thank you. The, the only other thing that, that I would say is. In this timeline that we received, that's attached to the agenda, the LCAP and the goals. And the mid-year update was included, but when I received the email via Parent Square. That wasn't included. And I think that would be helpful for people that are planning to participate, to have that in advance somehow. Or to know that's something that they could review. So they could go to the meeting, maybe a little prepared. That's just a thought. Yeah.
We sent an email out today with that additional information as a reminder. We sent an email out today with that additional information as a reminder and the links to be able to access the meetings.
Is that an answer to me, or? Because I was just saying, that email didn't have some of this information.
Yes, thank you for that. We will be sending out this two-pager as well, and I can actually go and link the mid-year update and the LCAP into the survey so they have that information. But yeah, thank you for that point.
Further questions, Trustee Medina?
No, thank you.
All right, other board members, questions? Okay, public comment, comments from people joining remotely?
If there are any members joining remotely, any members in the public who would like to comment on Item E5, please raise your hand. There are no hands raised.
All right, we are bringing it back to the board for further discussion or questions. Trustee De La Cruz.
I just want to give a shout. I just want to give a shout out to Margie Brady Long, who has done a really nice job of putting together this kind of matrix and shared it with me recently, and it really lays out kind of the structure that I think helps with that transparency and what Director Medina was talking about in terms of being able to see each goal, the amount of money for the goal, and our progress towards that goal. So thank you to the Data Geeks in the district who are really helping us to see some of this thing.
All right, I'm looking at the time. It is 9:40. Assurances, we got this. Okay, well then, thank you, Dr. Armstrong. Thank you for the update. Okay, moving on quickly to our F-items, we had Trustee Flores pull Agenda Item F5. So bringing it to the board.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Items F2 through 4 and 6 through 9.
All right, it's been moved by Trustee McCormick for approval of Items F2 through 4, F6 through 9, and seconded by Trustee Medina. Ready for a vote?
Director Beard. Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Fong. Director Flores.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye. All right, motion passes. We have pulled Item F5. Turn it over to you, Trustee Flores.
Yeah, can you hear me? Sit down. Is there, I noticed one of the contracts for Carina Hue LLC. When I was doing some research, it appears to be that we have approved this amount before. I'd just like to know, is this an ongoing sort of service that we have with Carina? And if so, do we get a, an update as to what should is done in terms of, you know, meeting with our students? And, you know, anyway, so that's my question. Thank you.
All right, Superintendent Trinell?
Thank you, yes. And I've invited Dr. Armstrong to also speak on this item. She has some intimate information about the inner workings of the why for this particular contract.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I also have Debbie Cartosa, if she can be brought over, who is also able to respond with more detail. So this is a third part to a contract that we have, that we're requesting with Carina Huey. These funds, the other work that she did for getting that LC Allen and CCLA project off the ground with students was paid for out of the CTIC grant funds, and this work happening now is out of the CTE incentive grant. And so it's for work that goes from now through the end of June. Then I also will turn it over to Debbie so she can share more specifics about the work.
Thank you, Dr. Armstrong. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your question as well, Director Flores. So as, and I was hopping on as director or as Dr. Armstrong was speaking, so I apologize if I repeat something that she said. I didn't quite catch everything, so I was joining. So the last six months, we've been working with Carina Huey really to mostly work with students and, of course, with staff and parents and site administration, you know, with our design team, to really kind of build a foundation for the work. So we've, some of the outcomes have been the development and revamping of the graduate profile at LC Allen High School. So we finalized that, which we had a lot of stakeholder input on. But really, we leverage student voices to really inform the direction that we're going to take CTE as well as the Dual Immersion Program at LC Allen High School. So that was kind of laying that foundation. I believe Dr. Armstrong shared, the first grant was paid for out of CTE incentive grant funding that was specifically written by the former CTE director to focus solely on the work at LC Allen High School. That grant ended in December of 2021, and so then we had another renewal grant, and we utilized CSI funding to continue that work. And then now we are leveraging another CTE incentive grant that is from the 2021 school year that was written more broadly by the former director to really serve all CTE programs. But I'm able, we're able to leverage that funding to really help elevate the work at LC Allen High School, even though that particular grant wasn't written for LC. So next steps include really diving into the work and bringing that graduate profile to life. So extensive professional development with staff, specifically looking at our CTE program, since it is a CTE grant. So we need to make sure that we are true to the funding source and developing projects that have that multicultural lens, prepare students that are multilingual, which really aligns to some of the feedback that we had from our CTE Advisory Committee at the district level. So that's kind of the direction that we're going now. It's putting stuff into action and developing projects that not only can be utilized by the staff and the students get to experience those types of projects, but ultimately, it'll serve as a guide for development of additional projects and CTE programs district-wide. So it's kind of taking it to that next level, if that makes sense.
Can you hear me? Yeah. So I see that. Thank you for doing that and for that, and for that report. But one of the things I would love to see, and I think other board members have mentioned this in the past, is that as part of the process of not only vetting but agreeing to these projects is to have, have the individuals report a brief explanation as to what the outcomes of their program was and put as an informational item. You don't have to report it, right? But, you know, I'll read it, because I read everything on the agenda. It's kind of odd to see that, you know, okay, so we spent $50,000 in here, and these were the outcomes from these funding sources, right? So you don't have a board member asking, wait, I mean, this is the third time I've seen this individual here, and I haven't seen anything. Comes to the board agenda mentioning, you know, this is what they've done, right? So like I said, not necessarily a full report, but something in the informational item saying, yes. And I will put the burden of this on the actual vendor, right, as part of their ability to do contracts with us. So that way, we have some sort of, you know, check and balances as to what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Flores. Looking for a motion. F5?
I will make a motion to approve F5.
By Trustee McCormick, seconded by Trustee De La Cruz. Ready for a vote?
Director Beard. Director McCormick. Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri. Director Fong. Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye. All right, thank you. Moving on to our G-items, approval of minutes. G1, approval of minutes of the regular board meeting held on March 30th. This is a correction updated on 4/11.
I'd like to move for approval of the minutes.
Second.
All right, moved by Trustee De La Cruz, seconded by Trustee McCormick. Ready for a vote?
Director Beard. Director De La Cruz. Director McCormick. Director Manieri. Director Fong. Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye. H-items, board member requests for information, or the request for information tonight. Trustee Flores.
Hello? Yes, and I think I brought this up to our superintendent already, and I don't know if I've said this already, but could we have an update on our school bond sort of measure? The election's coming up, and, you know, I know I received a mailer, but I'd like to, I'd like to know a little bit more as to where we are in terms of our polling data, what sort of projects we have, what are we vetting in terms of what projects we want to invest on? So I am dying to find out.
Thank you, Trustee Flores. Are there requests for information? Trustee De La Cruz.
I'd love to just, in line with my comments and my introduction, just make sure that with every resolution that there is a curricular plan that is, that accompanies the resolutions, that there is some meat behind our intent. And so, you know, and there's lots of great curricular support out there for many of these kind of days of celebration. So we're not having to recreate the will, but there is a way to really roll it in and to make sure that what we say is followed up by what we do.
I like that. Words, actions behind our words. All right, Trustee, yes, Manieri?
Yeah, I'd like to request information around the feasibility of having a standing D-LAC report on our board agenda. I, you know, definitely want to make sure that those voices are uplifted today. And I think, as I was hearing, actually, one of our public, one of our parents actually made this suggestion that this be something we talk about frequently. So then I thought about a standing item.
Thank you. Other board members, request for information? Seeing none. Information items are listed in the agenda packet, and before we adjourn, Superintendent Trinell, any last announcements?
Thank you to everyone for bearing with us tonight and for your patience, for everyone who worked so hard to get this set up. Thank you to Dr. Klissold and the team here, as well as all of those who were behind the scenes. We look forward to continuing to engage with everyone in person and online.
Woohoo, we did it, guys. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.